I am now calling this meeting to order. This is the June meeting of the AMSA Board of Trustees and it is a special annual meeting because we will be doing officer elections. We have Allison Cohen who's participating remotely due to an emergency. Allison, can you confirm that you can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, and we can hear you clearly as well. What this does mean is that all of our votes will have to be roll call votes. Just so people are aware. The, just to review the agenda today, we actually have a very full agenda but we have a short executive session, so that's good. So it will be an open session longer than we have been the last couple of months. This will be our faculty rep's last meeting, so she's asked for longer than five minutes for comments. We will have our parent update. In the ED report, we are going to be talking both about the recent faculty survey that was sent out, actually the staff survey, because it was faculty and staff. A little bit more discussion on family survey results, you all received the open response questions that Rick graciously redacted, and also an update on Special Education Department. In Chair business, we're doing trustee elections, we're going to be electing, re-electing our current rep, re-electing our new faculty rep. A brief discussion on committee assignments, this is our annual distribution of tasks for all trustees, so we're going to be looking at all our committees and task forces. We get to vote on our collective bargaining contract that our collective bargaining team graciously spent many, many hours negotiating. And then we'll have updates from various task forces. And then within governance, we're going to be talking about officer elections, because all officers are up for renewal. Discuss a proposed ED evaluation process. And then we'll have a longer discussion on the Education Committee report and recommendations that were started last month. We will take a good chunk of time. We've devoted 30 minutes, we'll see how the discussion goes. A copy of last month's report is in your board package as well. So are there any questions or changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, if not, let's look at the minutes.
I don't see Sarah, who's taking minutes tonight?
Any questions on minutes?
I just, I didn't see Sarah.
I know Sarah's not here today, so Allison, my turn.
You, okay.
Any comments on the minutes, questions? Oh, and also I should make a note that the meeting is being videotaped.
Can you make a motion with 70 minutes?
Ken made a motion.
Second.
Chris would second, we have to do this as a roll call vote, so Mark.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
I'm staying, I was not here.
I vote yes.
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 Okay, thank you, the minutes are up. All right, public comments?
Ooh, got our fancy update to the polling.
Okay, we have two people signed up for public comments, Ms. Lisa Anderson?
Thank you. My name is Lisa Anderson, I'm the parent of a rising seventh grader and the spouse of a veteran AMSA teacher. By many accounts, I consider myself a veteran to the AMSA community. All schools have their ups and downs, and even drama from time to time, but I think that most would say the first years of AMSA were not nearly as tumultuous as the last four. Early on, AMSA had already established itself as a school of choice, one that many families came to, came from afar to be a part of. It was a place that had built a true community amongst the families and the teachers. My husband was proud to be a part of something different and that fostered positive parent-teacher relationships, but didn't have the rules and limitations other non-charter public school environments faced. However, four years ago, everything changed. AMSA was in its seventh year of existence, still a young school at many standards, but still old enough to know better. What I did not add earlier, as I introduced myself, is that in addition to being a wife and a mother, I'm also a human resources professional with over 15 years of experience working with companies big and small, from a well-established local early childhood education company, a large international boot and clothing retailer, progressive biotech, and a very successful retail company that is a household name. I have experience creating and implementing employment policies, employee engagement programs, handling a wide range of employee relations issues, oversight of performance management programs and performance improvement plans. If I had been the HR professional on this team, I can wholeheartedly say I would put the board and the past and present administrators on a performance improvement plan long ago. If I don't have to do my, if I don't do my job, I get fired. You shouldn't be any different. While I could speak to many concerns, I realize my time is limited, therefore, my largest concern is for getting teacher retention around. Four years ago, I wasn't a parent of an AMSA student, but as a mother, I can empathize with the massive changes that are, that were afoot. As an HR professional, I was in awe of the choices being made in the three years under John Mercado's reign. In the early, early years of his appointment at AMSA, there was a hope that possibly, perhaps, this was the change the school needed, an experienced administrator. He was upfront, told you how he felt, and you knew where you stood with him. Moved into, moved into the end of the year too, and it started to move downhill to the point that teachers started to question decisions being made by the ED, Mr. Mercado, and the principal, Mr. Sweeney. It was at that time that teachers started to experience bullying behaviors that were demeaning and demoralizing and left them feeling fearful for their jobs. I was fearful for my husband's profession and our family's life and good. This past year, under Dr. McLeary, Mr. Curry, and Ms. O'Connor has been no better. This environment is a cancer that is spreading and needs to be treated now. Teachers are pouring their hearts and souls into the education of our children, and in return, they are facing barriers with union negotiations, revolving door of administrators, massive lack of respect and professional courtesy, and demeaning and oppressive leadership. Data reports recorded and shared on the DOE website supports the pattern as well. 2013, our retention rate of teachers was reported at 81.9 percent. Last year was 83.3, the lowest of the four core towns. Their average retention was 91.25. Our retention rates are also below the state average of 88.5. Even if you look at the five-year average, AMSA retention rates are far below the core towns' average as well as the state average. If we are to be a school of choice, then teacher retention is paramount to this success. Move forward to the summer of 2015 and to this year, and we are still facing massive attrition. Last year reportedly hit around 25 percent. However, when I questioned Dr. McCleary for information, I was stonewalled. However, it is reported that he believes attrition happens. Yes, it does, but not at the rate or the fashion in which we have seen. This feels more like a cleanse than normal and natural attrition. Attrition is normal and healthy, but only to a certain degree. There are many number of studies that can speak to that fact. Current data is no better. Here we are in the first week of summer, and we are already at 15 percent and climbing. It is time to stop the bleeding and right this ship. In this year, with our fifth ED, we are no nearer to that goal than we were two years ago. Under the current administration, we started and ended the school year with uniform case. We wasted countless time on that. We have faced deceit, a reduction of services of special education students, an extreme lack of communication, a decrease in adherence to and regard for safety rules and regulations, cover-ups of school-related incidents, an increase in student misconduct, and bullying and continued attrition issues, not just in teachers, but also with students, which is a new and troublesome trend. You can have the brightest students and even the modest of administrators, but without highly skilled, motivated, and dedicated teachers who feel heard, valued, and respected, we cannot be successful. I think the empirical and anecdotal evidence is overwhelmingly clear. We are a sinking ship. Without swift, clear action and immediate development of across functional task works to fix these issues, we will cease to exist. All options for teacher retention need to be explored. We, what we have right now is not working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, board and audience, I have very good decent news to share. I'm coming forth as the president of the St. Eagle STEM Foundation and working with the AMSA Foundation. We have merged the two organizations together. The STEM St. Eagles has accepted the grant from the AMSA Foundation of the remaining, of the remaining monies, which will be used with the benefit of the school. And so going forward, the STEM St. Eagles will be the foundation that will be representing the school in the long term and coming, and I think it will be very much in the best interest of the school at this time.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thanks for your, yes.
Hi, this is my official final faculty report to the board. I did ask for a little bit more than my allotted five minutes, and I thank you, Colleen, for giving me that. I'm going to start by sharing some, something from a teacher who is not me, as I've always tried, some days better than others, I'm sure, to try and represent voices other than my own. I have not always been successful of that, but I'm going to try to do that today. This is some, some, I posed a question to-
Jess, can I ask you, just to speak a little bit louder, I'm sorry, because I want to be able to hear what you're saying.
Is this better, Allison? Can you hear me now?
Just to speak a little bit louder, Jess, I want to hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I'll try my best, Allison.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I posed a question to staff members. What can I bring to the board? What can the board do at tonight's meeting to help you feel confident in the board, to help you have trust in what the board is doing? And these are this person's suggestions. I don't happen to agree with all of them, but I'm sharing them with you because I think they're a valid window into what many staff members are feeling. And, and so I think it's important that you hear them. So, here we go. What can the board do? They can acknowledge their part in the negative culture and environment that has evolved over the past several years at AMSA. Yes, even though many of them are newer members. They can apologize to staff who have left over the years for any wrongs those people may still feel in regards to how they were treated. They can express their disappointment, frustration, and pain in being part of an organization that is best known for the one successful performance of its students in multiple venues states and nationwide over the past years, and the mismanagement and mistreatment of its teachers and staff in countless ways over the same period. They can express their desire to turn things around and willingness to be held accountable for the speed of that turnaround. They can acknowledge that the current system has not been working in the best interests of the students or staff, and that there needs to be changes to the fundamental way AMSA is managed. They can publicize the results of the staff survey to all teachers and families verbatim. They can act on the results of the survey publicly as appropriate and swiftly. They could admit that a single teacher representative on the Board of Trustees has been a poor way for them to gain an accurate and timely view of how teachers feel about their employment and treatment at the school. There needs to be better teacher representation to or on the board, and that they are willing to be, and they're willing to publicly explore any of these options. For example, more teacher representation and power within the structure of the school. They can admit that relying on the executive director to give them a realistic and timely view of what's happening at the school has proven to be inadequate, and as have been yearly surveys of the staff. There need to be other ways the board can get a finger on the pulse of AMSA, so to speak. They can show that they are willing to publicly explore these options, or they can publicly show. They can vocalize their desire to make AMSA a school other teachers will be tempted to leave their places of employment and come to, rather than the opposite. This would require them to finally take a stand behind the teachers who have faithfully defended the AMSA wall, recognize the importance of the profession, and show their willingness to do what it takes to keep teachers at the school. Yes, this means renegotiating the current deal. Express their willingness to commit to communication, communicating with AMSA alumni, building more of a community that celebrates past students and welcomes them back to participate in community-building activities. And the person concludes by saying, "I recognize that many of these don't technically fall within what the board generally does. The past five years show me that it's time to change what the board generally does because they have been part of the problem intentionally or not." So I'm going to move on from that, and I'm going to say a little bit about the role of the faculty rep. This is the end of my tenure. I've served two one-year terms. And right before I came into this position, the bylaws were changed so that the faculty rep could be limited to serving two one-year terms. I'm saying this for anybody who might not know. The faculty rep used to be able to serve three one-year terms, and I believe that's the same with the parent rep. We've tried to keep, the board has tried to keep these roles fairly parallel. I believe that the move to change it, to limit it to two years, when it was first moved, was viewed with suspicion among the faculty. What? They don't, they don't want our person to be on the board. At the time, I was that person, so I was flattered. I don't think I would win an election if it happened today, and I think that it's really smart that we're going to two, to limiting to two-year terms. This role, the faculty rep role, can only work if this person brings an outsider perspective. It can only work if you, the board, are, if, if I'm free to come in and say, "Here's what you're not hearing." But as I've worked with you for two years, I have come to a place where I want to work with you and not against you. I don't want to be an outsider. I'm not an outsider anymore. I'm one of the insiders, I've been working with you. I have access to meetings with Dr. McCleary that the vast majority of faculty members don't have, and I automatically therefore have a different perspective. And I, I think it's important to realize that it's very healthy that I am leaving, and that I, I don't think that that needs to be a judgment in any way on me or the job that I've done. As a matter of fact, recently, one of my colleagues suggested that I should be ashamed of how I have represented the faculty. And I'm, I'm sorry that they feel that way. I, I'm not ashamed of the job I've done. I've been through two very difficult years, and I've tried to do the best I can, and I know that I haven't always done the best job. And so I just encourage the board to kind of recognize that role as, this role as a difficult one, that sometimes it's my job to be a gadfly. Not my job, but it will be Tom's job next. Sorry, Tom. And so that's an important role. The faculty needs to feel like you are willing to listen to the nasty stuff. And so I'm just asking you to keep that in mind, and I'm asking the faculty to keep in mind that this role changes your perspective by its very nature. And I, I have come to sort of appreciate that change. With that, I am going to offer my thoughts on this end of the school year and, and what I, where I am. So here's my last faculty rep to the board. Next month, you'll be welcoming Tom, and I'm very confident that he will be an excellent representative of the faculty. I wish I had a more positive report to give at this time, but as you know, at least 10 faculty members will not be returning to next, to AMSA next fall. This does not include the fairly long list of people who left during the school year. All of the people are leaving for different reasons, but all of them are choosing to leave. Not a single person has been terminated or asked not to return. I would like to publicly thank these teachers for their years of service to AMSA and to its students. Lauren Galliardi, David Alano, Kelly Antonuccio, Melissa Gray, Rhiannon Myers, Andrew Cudo, Katie Jenkins, Corey Pasternak, Irina Russell, who is, I think, the only person on that list who's been here longer than I have. She retired. I wish her the best of health. I think that is AMSA's first official retirement. And Sheila Warner is also leaving, who is not a teacher but has supported AMSA teachers superbly. My big fear is that this list will continue to grow. It has been a difficult year for many people at AMSA this year, and I think it's time for us to face a very difficult truth. This is not a nice place to work. And I think we need to ask ourselves some really honest questions about why this is true. A workplace climate should have a tone that is set by the administration and the board, but we are all responsible for helping to create the climate we want to experience. And many people in the community have been willing to look to administration and the board to fix the climate issues, but have been unwilling to question their own behavior. This is an all-hands-on-deck kind of moment. I think it's really important to recognize that it's not just the many teachers who have had a really sour year. Many parents have bad, have had bad experiences this year, several department chairs have had rough years, and our administrators, in their first year here, have faced a baptism by fire. I have heard horror stories, and I have witnessed with my own eyes people not being treated well. I've heard of people being called ugly names and treated rudely, people who overheard cruel things said about them based on their physical appearance, or about how they dress, how much they eat. I have seen, and I am not necessarily talking about teachers, and here's where I'm probably going to be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say some things that aren't going to make a lot of people happy, but this is my last moment. I have seen administrators victim to this community as much, if not more so, than teachers and parents, and I think we need to acknowledge that. I have seen administrators openly mocked at faculty meetings, I have, in front of the entire faculty. I have seen administrators pilloried on social media with self-serving half-truths offered as justification. I have seen people complain about the number of administrations teachers or students have had to adjust to, and then in the next breath suggest that the administration needs to go. These things happen to people who are new to our community, people who should have been welcomed, and under these circumstances, I don't know why any administrator, why any teacher, or why any parent would stay. It is ugly. And I want to say this really seriously, we need to look at what we can do to fix this. Maybe you think you would be happier if Dr. McCleary, or Dr. Curry, or Ms. O'Connor did leave. Maybe you think that's why we made, maybe that's why we made it unwelcoming in the first place. But I don't blame anyone who chooses to leave. People need to make the right decisions for their families. But where will AMSA be if people continue to leave? We cannot start fresh every autumn. We have to ask ourselves where we want to be in five years. I don't know if you have ever thought of me as a person with integrity, wisdom, or honesty, but I hope so. I hope that's how I got elected in the first place. But if you have ever valued my opinion, I'm asking you to give some weight to what I am saying. There are very few great school administrators out there, and I have met with Dr. McCleary many times, and I think that he is the real deal. I think that we are conditioned to think of people who react quickly as decisive leaders, and he is not a quick actor. We tend to associate quiet with weakness, and I don't think that, I think that Dr. McCleary's slowness to anger is his strength. Every decision that he has made has been greeted with loud, angry, public criticism. And if he leaves, I wouldn't blame him. I think not only do we not need to be in a position where we're asking him to leave, we need to be praying every night that he doesn't decide to leave us, because we have made this a miserable place for him to come to work, and if he leaves, as an institution, we will not be better off. In my two years on the board, I have worked on hiring two executive directors. It's an exhausting task. If you have seen the pile of resumes that come in, there are not a lot of great leaders out there. There's not some magical forest growing brilliant executive directors and we can just go and have our pick. Google us. Would you come and work here? I teach government, and so forgive me for dropping a little government lesson in here. We don't live in a democracy. Madison and the founders actually feared democracy because human nature is volatile and we get upset, we get upset at stuff. We react. Our government is designed to insulate policy creation from this volatility. Our legislative process is intentionally long and full of hurdles. Our president is elected to a four-year term. Our senators are elected to six-year terms, and our representatives in the House are elected to two-year terms. The offices that are short-term are designed to be responsible to the people. You're supposed to be able to call your House representative, and, and I'm a short-term, I'm supposed to be able to react to you. But senators and presidents have longer terms because the founders wanted to recognize that they need a little bit of space and time to implement decisions that may not be popular, but need some time to, to work themselves out. We have impeachment for officials who violate the law, but history teaches us that it's not to be used for abuse, it's not to be used for political reasons. The board hired Dr. McCleary to a three-year contract. That was a wise decision. Dr. McCleary has shown himself to be a patient man, to make slow but deliberate decisions, to observe before reacting, and to persuade people rather than to force them. As a school, we need to give him the time and the space to realize his vision, and we need to hope beyond what is actually reasonable that he does not give up on us. Dr. McCleary, and Dr. Curry, and Ms. O'Connor are really smart people. They have a lot of experience, and they know what they're doing. They have taken a year to learn about AMSA and the specific elements that make us special and unique to the special challenges we face, and I don't know why we are working so hard as a community to impeach them. This administrative team came into a difficult situation at best. They have tried to bring order and a long-term vision while maintaining and reviving AMSA's commitment to academic excellence. Of all the executive directors I have worked under, none have been as committed to the original founding mission of the School of Academic Excellence for its students, and none have been as capable of making that vision happen. Have they made mistakes? Yes! Can they do better? Holy mackerel, yes! But critically, they have made good faith efforts to listen to concerns and address these mistakes. I believe that they can get, get better, and I believe that, yes, they can address our concerns. There's really good news out there. The teachers and the board have come to an agreement on a contract which is fair. It is a clear tool for evaluating teachers, which is the first time in 10 years that we've had this. It has salaries that, and a better compensation package, and it's a sign of how far we have come. One of the reasons I love teaching AMSA and the reason education hasn't suffered during the many years of turmoil we've faced is that we have a bedrock of celebrating knowledge and expecting to learn. When a teacher at this school assigns work that is difficult and challenging, students and parents recognize this, and although they might be a little bit grumbly about the seven-page paper I assigned them, they support teaching decisions and they expect rigor, they expect it's not going to be easy. I'm not talking about things that are unacceptable, like unethical and illegal behaviors. This is not the norm with our leaders. We have created a climate here at AMSA where we support teachers, but we don't support our leaders. We don't accept their decisions. When we hear of things we don't agree with, our first reaction is to complain loudly and publicly, and sometimes in a very nasty way, and we have made it virtually impossible for someone to come in and lead us. More than any of the things people have asked for in the past year, communication, uniform, staffing, what AMSA needs is two things. Stability is the first. We need to let our leaders lead, we need to support them, especially publicly, complain in, and we need to see what the results are, and then we can tweak it. We must support our leaders just as we, just as parents and teachers support, as parents and students support teachers. We must support our leaders. If we disagree with decisions that they made, which of course, you're allowed to do, we have to find a civil and productive way to address these concerns. The second thing we need is kindness. We must stop being awful to each other. If you would disagree with a policy, disagree politely. Explain rationally why you think something else would be a better option. The administration may not change its mind, but I guarantee you, they are listening and they do take it into account. Here's where I'm getting at. I'm sorry I'm rambling. It is not in our best interest to continue this way. We are not looking at removing just one person. We are looking at damaging our school. If we cannot fix stability and kindness, there will be no more AMSA. I cannot get paid a salary, good or bad, from a school that does not exist. Please, let us make decisions for the future based on these two things, stability and kindness. I am prepared to report that hashtag, "I am staying," and I will do all that I can to make this school a great place to learn and work. make this school a great place to learn and work, and I hope that everyone, board members, parents, and teachers, will join me in that pledge.
Thank you very much, Liz.
Thank you.
I would definitely like to say on behalf of the board that we are very aware of the difficult situation that you have been in. You've been an exceptional faculty rep. I don't think you have skirted the lines in, I mean, you've definitely been the gadfly. You've been, you've spoken up, you have represented multiple points of view. We know when you first came on board and you said things that no one wanted to hear, that there was an outcry over that, and I would certainly like to just publicly thank you for the role that you have played and for your honesty and for raising issues that other people have encountered. Would anyone else like to make any other comments? I'm sort of speaking on behalf of everybody, but...
What she said. Yeah, but thank you. Your position has not been an easy one to be in, and I really admire that.
Good luck, Tom.
And Jessica, I could go on and on, honestly, but I echo the sentiments, and I'm really glad you were on. You brought a lot of perspective, and you've always been too. So, thank you.
We're gonna miss you.
I would like to say the same. I'm looking forward to getting back to my Thursday night trivia team.
You can always come.
I can always come, yeah.
Thank you very much for your comments. Liz?
Okay, so for the parent representative, fortunately, I was able to reach out as school was ending, and people haven't forgotten that we were meeting tonight, so I did get a number of responses. Actually, just to echo what Jessica was talking about and what Lisa mentioned earlier, teacher turnover continues to be a great concern, and I heard from more than 20 parents, and not just teacher turnover, but the quality of the teachers leaving. And just to put it into perspective, I did take Rick's redacted comments and sort of broke them down into four categories, and what I came up with is 41% of the comments about the characteristic of your child's school in terms of his or her learning, 41% was teacher-related directly. 33% was culture, 24% was curriculum, and a lot of the curriculum columns could have gone either way, either curriculum or teacher-based. So, I don't, I don't think it should be lost on any of us that the turnover issue is a problem that we need to get in front of quickly. So, that is one thing that I did want to address. The other thing I would say I've heard from five to 10 people around, and I want to confirm, I don't know if this is true or not, but there's been information floating around that the school's been operating with one nurse, and there is concern around that and the legality of that, and I do not know if that is true or not. So, I'm just asking that question. Another comment that I just received tonight that I think would be interested, I'd be interested to understand this, is around the accountability plan, and I know that we report out on that once a year, but I'm wondering if there are pieces of it that can be reported out periodically throughout the year so we don't lose sight of it because it is such an important document, and that, that's just one question, and it doesn't necessarily have to be via a board meeting, it could be via the newsletter so that people are getting information around the accountability plan. And then another comment I did receive this evening was just around the coffees with the executive director and whether they're with the executive director or another administration rep, but just, it would be nice to see some results that are coming from those coffees versus just being a conversation. Make sure that there is more two-way communication happening and action taking place. And that is my update for tonight.
Thank you. We turn now to the executive director report.
So, the first thing I have to report on are the faculty staff survey results, which came in recently. I had met with faculty rep Ms. Bowen to go over the questions, and we selected a fairly large number of questions, somewhere in the order of 70 or so, and the questions involved questions that were asked previously last spring, and so the idea was to make a sort of comparison to see where things are headed. So, the different categories, as you can see, morale, faculty growth mindset, school climate, staff leadership, relation, teacher-family relation, and teaching efficacy. I think that if you go further, and testing, if you go further down, you can see where the individual questions were going, which directions. So, for example, for Amsa morale, if you look at the responses, and then you see on the right-hand side there, the green arrow means that the change was positive in an upward direction from last year. If it's a smaller number upward, it isn't in green, it's in grayish color, and so you can kind of at a glance tell where things are headed with these questions. And then if you go down, so all those are going upward, although some by smaller amounts than others. This, this section is about, let me see, where's the heading for that one? Is that still the morale?
Oh, right.
Okay, so morale, again, for example, management treats employees with fairness, respect, and dignity. How much has that changed? So, that's headed upward. Termination processes are fair and effective. That's headed upward substantially. How much has it changed? There are two parts to those questions. How much has it changed, and where is it headed?
So, could I ask a question about that very thing?
Yeah.
It was a little confusing to me because I noticed as Dr. McCleary is saying that each question came in two parts, and so, and they were paired, and so, you know, for example, I enjoy being part of this organization. If you go up just a little bit, I enjoy, no, the other way, I'm sorry, where the 12 is, okay? I enjoy being part of this organization. How much do you agree with this statement or with that statement? So, 61% responded favorably, and so that's down 12, okay? Then it says, "I enjoy being part of this organization." How much has this changed over the past 12 months? 24% responded favorably, and that is an uptick of 21. I, I just don't get the logic behind that at all. How could you, "enjoy being part of the organization," how much do you agree? And in general, it's 61. So, I guess the implication is, is that 61% say, "Yes, I enjoy it." Only 24% said that it increased over the past 12 months. Is that the way?
Yeah, I think that's the right way to interpret it.
And so, how does that 12 and 21 factor into that? The up 12, or down 12, up 21? Is that, is that a number of responses, or...
So, Ken, you're saying that, that 12, I don't know, are these percents or raw? So, it's down, it's down 12% from, from last year at the same time?
Down 12.
So, we can assume that in spring of 20...
You're, down 12 what?
12%.
No, it's not 12%. Is that 12%?
Yeah, I think, yeah, they're comparing what it was last spring, so presumably last spring, it was, what, 73?
That's what I was just gonna say.
And so, it went down.
And the other one was 3%?
Yes. That's right.
Well, so, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to derail the conversation here, I'm just saying it's, it's confusing to me how to interpret these, this pairing.
I think that was one of the questions that was asked more often than not. Some of the questions, there are not too many of them, but some of them have that pairing, where it talks about how much has changed, and then do you agree with it, you know, yes, no, I agree a great deal, or a little bit, or whatever. So, maybe that's a, those particular questions that are those pairs would be something we could explore.
Well, the reason why I think this is important is because if you go down, you know, if you, if you look at several of them, "The tools and technology we use to help me get my job done, how much do you agree with this?" 72% responded favorably, okay? That's down nine. And yet, 14% have said it's gone, that it's improved over the last 12 months, which just seems to, if it's gone down nine, how can it improve by 14?
Well, I think, Ken, that the people who took the survey in spring of 2015 is not the same group that took it. So, it's possible that the, it's changed from 2015, then a different group is taking it now.
Yeah, well, even aside from that, right, so, no, sorry, I suppose. So, 72%, that's down 9% from spring, okay? Now, the same group is asked, "Has it improved?" 14% of it, of those people perceived, though, it's improved.
That's not what it says. It says changed.
Has it changed?
Doesn't say improved.
Oh, it actually, yeah.
Oh, so if you took change as negative, then that...
Could be, yeah. Oh, yeah, but actually, I think if you look at the underlying questions, because I had a quick chance to look at it right before this, I think, though, responded favorably is, it changed in a positive way. So, 14% were believed over the last 12 months it's improved, okay?
That's where I also think the wording is very confusing to me, like if you go to the question, "I am challenged in my role. How much has it changed over the past 12 months?" It almost, the question is really asking to me for some type of a finite response. How much has it changed? But our responses are not in accordance with that question, so I have difficulty in interpreting some of the data also.
Yeah, I would suggest you may want to look at the underlying, this is a summary view of it. I had first chance to look at it today. If you look at the underlying questions, they break down into five questions. Here, this is the, that 14% is a summary of the favorable, this 14% viewed favorably, but some viewed it negatively and said, so it's very, I think you really have to look at the deeper...
When will those results, that breakdown, be available?
I don't think there's any reason I think you can post it on the web.
So, it's already, it's already out?
No, I think the issue was we were trying to get the Likert scales.
Yeah, the Likert scales, that's right. That's what I sent you today.
Oh, they didn't get...
No, I did, yeah, I sent it to you today.
So, I think they're, but they are available as of now.
Yeah.
So, I think it's just a matter of putting the link up.
But we have confirmed that the second column is percentages, it is not number of responses.
Not sure we have.
That's a fact. I think we'll have to, we'll have to look.
No, the second column, meaning the ones in color?
Yes.
21, 9, 3, is that, is that percentage?
No, that's percent, that's percent.
It's not number of responses.
Yeah, I think they're percentages.
I think, I think these are poorly worded. They're very... They're just, anybody...
So, I'll differentiate between the questions, which, when I look at the raw results, I understand, we went through this, about last time, we went through this whole thing at the January meeting, you know, because they were looking at some positive answers as being negative, because they weren't high enough. And the, I find it tremendous, tremendously helpful to look at the raw data. I find it not very helpful to look at their summary. I like to, I would like to see the results and have that posted so that we can look at it.
I think that there's some problems with the questions and some problems with that, but I don't think that we should let that sort of cloud the general trend that we're seeing here, and that is morale is still not high. So, no matter how we interpret this data, and what the numbers mean, and percentages, and green arrows and red arrows, we still have a morale problem.
Okay, I don't disagree with that, but how are you, how are you getting that from the numbers?
Morale is high among Amsa faculty and staff. How much do you agree with this statement? 14% responded favorably. No matter how we interpret that, that ain't good.
I mean, here are all numbers.
14% are in the top two box.
The top two boxes?
Yeah.
And we went, that's what I said, it's the top two boxes. They, they do not interpret the third box as being positive when in fact that third box...
It's neutral, actually.
Well, sometimes it has been neutral, sometimes it hasn't.
So, I'm not here to justify Panorama's methodology. However, it is typical in surveys and Likert scales to view the top two, the top two, terminology, top two box as a favorable. That's, that's typical practice.
I had, I had actually asked them about that back in January because this came up when we were having a meeting, and I pointed out that, you know, it could be possible to interpret the third one as positive, but they said they want to err on the side of being absolutely certain, so they go with the top two rather than the three. Because I brought that up after we had that discussion.
So, the problem here is, is the top two boxes, it's 14%, okay? Now, look, I'm not trying to argue that morale is higher. Okay, let's get that straight, okay? I'm not trying to argue that at all. What I'm saying is, is when you take only the top two boxes, what you're saying is, only 14% of the teachers put the school in the top two boxes, okay? That's not very good, true enough, okay? I'd also point out, though, that it's scaled up, okay, since the last one. So, how, you know, what is the scaling? And when I, when, this is the same problem that we had in January. When I look at the way the numbers trended, my interpretation of the data was more positive. Not that we didn't have problems that needed addressing, but it was more positive than what the summary report gives, and that's...
Yeah, and no question about it, I completely agree. You need to look at the detailed report. I think that's now available as of today. It'll be posted. I think the, just, and I would just say, I think this is kind of like a repeat of last month. We got the summary results first, then you can drill down on the details. I think you got the detailed links for the family survey, which we will review in the summary last one, so you can drill down and look at the actual raw local data to get a better sense. But I think to just point fundamentally, I mean, we have an issue.
And if you look at, let me just, if I interpret that correctly, then I would say that back in June, we were at 8%, now we're at 14. So, if you just looked at the numbers, it's like a 75% improvement. It was extremely low, and no one's happy with that, so, so just that.
I took it, things are bad, they're getting a little better, very slow.
They're slightly less bad.
I, I mean, I just think it's bad, right? But, a, another way I think they could, that's what we're going for, is it'll be important, we need to understand why this is only a 14%, right? But if we looked at last spring's survey, and we saw what percentage of the population were in the bottom two boxes, and haven't seen a migration to the middle, that could be an indication that something's working. But I, you know, there's so much work to be done here, right? But it's, you know, my, my guesses from my experience is that if it's in a color, there's some type of statistical significance. So, when you move from a gray to a red, or a gray to a green, there's something happening behind the scenes where statistically it's a significant move, and it's worth paying attention to. But I think everybody's, no victory left. But I'd be curious to see whether or not we're moving from left to right, or moving from the bottom two box into neutral, that gives you some indication. Or you could have some outliers over here, and we could move to the left, and that'd even be worse. So, I think we gotta do some work on that.
Well, so, just to build on what you're saying, if you take a look at trust, which is down just a little bit, trust, you know, management creates an environment of trust. How much do you agree? Only 21% agreed with this, okay? And that's essentially unchanged, okay? Which is borne up on the next one, which is management creates an environment of trust. How much has this changed over the past 12 months? Not a lot of movement. I would contrast that with a few, a little while later, where it talks about termination processes being fair and effective, and we moved considerably at that point, right there. There was considerably movement there. There was considerably movement there. So, you know, this is why you have to, this is why we're asking for the data, that's why we need to take time looking at the data to identify the specific issue, in my opinion.
Did it have open responses?
Yes, it did.
We're gonna look at that.
Yeah, we will get those, those are being...
Being looked at, you know.
Because I think that's the most telling data.
Yeah, this survey only closed last...
It closed on Friday.
Friday, I think, yes. So it gave the, I mean, I sent this around as soon as we got it, Tuesday, maybe.
Also, somebody said, I don't know if it was Ken or Rick, putting this on the website, when you say putting this on the website, are you talking about board on track, which we have access to, or the website where everyone has access to?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, okay. So, and the open, once the comments have been redacted, identifying information, that will also go on the, on the website?
All the documents, all the documents that are...
Yeah, I just, I'm just making that clear, because I know that was one of the faculty concerns.
So now, all documents that are shown at the board meeting that are in our board packets always show up on the website after, so...
And just for, so we redact, so that we can, and we redact prior to showing it to the rest of the board, just to select you, redact, so that...
But that's actually why we don't have them right away, because...
So the board sees the redacted data, too?
Right.
By order of the redacts. Make sure we...
Correct.
Is being redacted without, we have an issue where you administration in prior years have redacted potentially improperly or not been fully transcribed.
I think because we just got these results, we have to digest, and as Ken said, really look and he'll send it around the link so that everyone can look into this in more detail. But I think that we do, we can certainly all acknowledge that this is...
Holly, could I make a suggestion going forward about this?
Yeah.
Which is, we talked about this in January a little bit, but, you know, ultimately, when we come back again to action planning, we've got to put some of our own targets out there.
Okay, yeah.
You know, like, let's pick a couple of these, a trust, communication, a couple of these things that we know that we have to go out, or are informed by Jessica or Tom or faculty, that says, these are things that really matter. Let's pick some of those things, let's really come up with some real action plans, and let's put a target out there. So when we come back, we're not excited about a twelve-point, twelve percentage increase, we're saying, well, that falls short of our twenty percent increase that we were expecting to see.
Yeah.
So let's, you know, we've done this a few times, I may regret myself for not pushing it, but like, it's just, it's just, you know, survey one-on-one, pick a few of these, put our targets out, get some real action plans going on, and we'll measure our success based on that.
I think it's a good idea, Mike.
That is a very good idea. So actually, what I was going to suggest then is that we put this on the agenda for next month, where everybody can have a ten-minute discussion, everybody can pick several of these big, you know, if we look at these summary things, because these will be the things that we measure, and we're, what we'd like to have as targets. Are you suggesting the underlying reports?
Yeah, I volunteer to help lead that if you want.
Okay.
I think it would be more productive to pick one of the internal questions for targets, rather than, because there's...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know we moved to, I mean, there's a process to pick the questions, right? And it starts with the people who are being surveyed, and start to talk to them about, what do you feel are most important and you need to work on? And then bring that back at some agreement.
I would actually suggest Tom work with you on that?
I'd love to work with him.
There you go, already put you on.
He's not even voted on yet.
Oh.
We'll do that in a minute.
We'll do, we'll do that.
We'll do that after we have voted on it.
Plenty of time.
But yes, the faculty rep, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, put Tom to burn on it.
Yes.
You put his to burn on it, too.
Tom to burn.
Oh, okay. Both Tom's.
I think when you look through the open response, heated forms, are, will not speak there.
No, no, I...
No doubt. I'm not saying you don't...
No, no, I'm just, I think all these pieces come together to make sure that we're picking the right topics.
Absolutely.
Yep, good point.
All right, thank you.
So the, okay, so the family survey results, I know we looked at those the last time, but the addition this time, I believe, involves the open response parts. And I think...
Do you want me to open it up?
If you'd like to, yeah. I think you, yeah. Yeah, so you can see, these are some of, these are the open response parts from the family survey. The general tenor seems to be, to me at least, Rick, Rick, you can, obviously you have something to say here, too, I think, but the, there's a lot of satisfaction or at least support for the academic environment, the teaching, the high level of rigor, the opportunity for students, the commitment of the students' teachers and so on. Again, they're all individual responses, so that's my reading of the general tenor of them, in terms of the, the sort of color, if you will, of them. So I'm just trying to catch up, okay?
I had a question about these as I was reading them. It's a little different reading them here on the hard copy, but when I was reading them online, we had a, we have a spreadsheet. There's two tabs. Does that mean that there were only two open response questions on the family survey? Or did we just kind of lump them all together?
So, I think there were only two.
There were only two.
The first tab is the first question, second tab is the second.
Okay. I did actually take the survey, I just forgot that. Okay, thank you.
I actually had a question, Rick, when you were redacting, there's a lot of, where there's blank space, was that because you just redacted a whole section?
No, if I redacted, I either, I used like a star or something like that. It was clear where I redacted.
So if it's blank space, it's just, that's how it got imported?
It got formatted.
So maybe that person didn't answer that question?
Probably.
Rick, did you redact all names, or did you just...
Just names or something else that might be...
I think you missed a few names.
Well, you kept names when they were in a positive context, I think you left the administrators, but...
Yes, it was, if it was identifying the individual who was...
A student, right.
A student or parent.
Oh.
Okay.
So those are just, you just have a couple of things, right?
No, this is the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, oh, there, this goes all along.
Yeah.
There are over two hundred and fifty responses. Yes, this whole thing, this whole thing. I really can't go, I can scroll, but not the individual.
Yeah, there are two hundred and forty-eight comments.
For example, somebody might, might say, what is something that the school is doing well? And, you know, there could be a two-word answer, quality instruction. And so when you scroll through, you have to really take your time looking at the various answers. You know, intensive curriculum, challenging courses, I'm just reading off, discipline, you know, one word. So you have to really kind of look at them slowly.
So, so that's true. I mean, the, the ones that we're getting on now, the second tab, it's clear that, you know, there are concerns around communication. This goes back to what Liz was saying.
Yeah, that's right, communication is a theme.
Uniform is a theme also.
Yeah.
Yep.
What's that?
Uniform was a theme throughout the whole...
Well, so just to clarify, I think, you know, you know, there's, I didn't hear anybody saying we should do away with the uniform. It was the process, it was a process by which the uniforms policy was revised, and the perception that there was very little opportunity to provide input. And I think there were concerns, you know, particularly around the cost that came up with the uniform.
Yeah, and I think it's important to also remember that those things, those concerns were addressed in terms of the cost. So we looked at a lower price point for, I know the PE uniform was the focus of some of those concerns as well.
Well, so I, so I think the concerns around cost, the current, concerns around cost at best could be said to be partially addressed, that you did make a, you know, it's fair to say that you made an attempt to find a lower price point. I know there's still a large population among the parents that are voicing concern over the expense of new uniforms, particularly, particularly so quickly in the first year.
I think it's also important to remember that there's a phase-in period for the uniforms so that you can use uniforms that have been used in the past, which also has an impact on the cost.
I just got it, it was the whole process, the way it all went down, kind of, that's how I kind of read it. It was a bunch of little different things, but just overall, it could have been done better, kind of, type of situation. That's kind of how I read it.
So I'll just comment, I, on the second tab in particular, I need to do it for the first, because the second one was kind of, I don't want, I don't want to sound negative, but because it was around things that could improve. I coded the answer, I took it, I stand quoting, and I think the four top topics were communication, but that broke, I broke it down into two. So the first was administration, communication. The second was just general communications, and it could have been teachers, staff, or fact, it was just ambiguous. Those were the top two, so communication. Uniform was, I think, the third, and I think to your point, Scott, it was mostly around process. And I think the fourth was around concern for teacher attrition and retention. Those were the four big ones. Then there were a series of others. There was, there was quite a bit of on extracurricular activity, a desire for that. Now, having said that, it's interesting, I also took another, coded when they said communication has improved, and so many folks actually indicated communication has improved, but it could be...
There were a couple of comments like, thanks for the newsletter or something like that.
So there was definitely indication of positive trend.
So did you, did you, what was the trend around special education? Because I saw several mentions of that.
It was, it was probably, if you look at the top ten categories, it's in the top ten, it is, it was probably around seven or eight.
Yeah, but think about that, though, like...
But it was in the tail.
Yeah, but what percentage of AMSAR is in that group? You know what I'm saying? So, yeah, that can be, that's skewed. You know what I'm saying?
There are also, also three percent, three point five percent.
Well, so if I'm understanding what Scott is saying, so few are in that population, relatively speaking, that if you get that many, that means a lot of that population are making contributions.
Correct. Yeah, so it's in the, it's in the top ten, definitely, I only thought for like the top ten categories, because there were a lot of onesies and twosies kind of things, it was enough there to be worthy of coding, you know, coding, because it was happening relatively.
One of the things that stood out to me, I don't know if it was one comment or multiple comments, but it had to do with the experiential learning outside of the classroom. And I think I had heard prior to the survey, in being in different discussions where that had come up, so that, I don't know if that's something that we want to, from an administration standpoint, at least, consider. I guess it's something that we had before, in some cases we don't have it now, is that something that we also need to think about, give some consideration?
I think that's one of the big topics on the EdCon report.
That'd be a nice segue into our EdCon stuff. By the way, parenthetically, the meaner schools, they just had a trip down to Cuba. So, okay, that's interesting. In the newspaper.
They brought back a ton of cigars, Ken's got some.
So we will publish this on the...
One of, another comment I've heard, and I've heard a couple of times on this, was that in some cases, students are being left to learn on their own. And I've heard that anecdotally from parents, and then it showed up a couple of times on the survey here. I don't really understand, I was going to say, what does that mean, if there is no particular... Well, my children have some very good teachers, they also have had some not respectful students that don't teach, very frustrating and stressful when the child has to come home and try to learn to work on their own. No, I mean, it's very vague.
Yeah.
But I've heard that a couple of times, so...
So another theme I coded was the frequency of where folks said there was inconsistency among teachers. I'm not saying that's true or false on this.
Yeah.
And that wasn't pretty common. It was one of the top ten, it was probably around the first six or seven.
So inconsistency among teachers is a topic that came up in the top?
Top, top, so some saying really great, and then some saying, yeah.
Are there any other comments that people want to highlight?
So when are we going to follow up with this? I mean, I mean, we've got to do something with this. We've got to have deadlines and follow-up and action plans, just like you said, we should, whatever we do, you know, with the parent, we all should do, should do with the teacher, and do the same thing, have goals and set goals.
Pick a few items?
Yeah.
Set some targets?
Volunteer for that, too?
No, sir. I will work on the faculty.
So I, I'm sorry, I was just going to comment, I think you will find the themes somewhat consistent. That is to say, I mean, I think if you see, well, I haven't, so I have not reviewed the faculty, but some of the themes are very consistent, I think the approach needs to be consistent.
So I think that, so, you know, from a practice standpoint, I think we should have two work streams that are talking in alignment, so, but I, I think it'd be a mistake, I think, to co-mingle and do that. I think there are different versions, different needs, and so...
I will be on the task force, but I won't lead it.
For the families?
The family one.
So somebody should work with Liz, it's going to be a task force, and we should all kind of stay in lockstep, but I don't know who needs that.
And then we should get together.
We should, yeah. Figure out if there are, if we all, if we both have a communication action plan, we should figure out, we shouldn't, I don't think we should co-mingle.
So the one thing I would say is, there's a, in my perspective, there's a great deal of alignment between the goals we set out for the year, both for the board, as well as for the executive director, and what the issues are that are going to come up.
So Liz and Scott will be on that task force, but this to come up with the same, the same concept of looking for targets, what it is that we want to know, that we want to...
I would suggest that we meet together for the...
To start.
To start. And then, not co-mingling, but at least to be on the same page.
That's a good approach, so...
Parallel strategies.
Yeah, I think it's good, yeah. So Scott, you were, you were unable to lead that task, so do we need a leader of the parent?
Oh, Liz can lead. Yeah, Liz can lead that one.
Good.
Before we sort of leave this data, what, the first chara, I just want to kind of highlight this. The first question is, what characteristic of your child's school is the most helpful for his or her learning? And if you chucked all of this text into one of those Word Cloud generators, I think that the job that teachers are doing really comes out strong, and I just, I just kind of want to leave with that. I'm excited that this will appear on the website, and, you know, some days, teaching can be an uphill task, and I hope that teachers look at these comments and see how really appreciated you are, because there's a lot of parents out here who took this survey, who took the time to write in there, some, some nice things about the jobs teachers are doing.
So, yeah, I would also agree with what Jess said about that characterization. The next part is a report that we put together, a year-end report, if you will, about the special education overview, and this is something that the special education administrators put together by looking at the, I think everybody has...
Who is Rick? Why don't we...
We have to step out on the phone, I'm not sure where this one is.
I just think as a, as a parent, it'd be nice to...
No, absolutely, should have that.
That's, that's our contract for next year.
Have, take a look.
Yeah, I don't know how to do it, unless somebody does, where...
I think you need to get out of town and see if you can get to the...
We'll come back to it, we'll come back to it.
Yeah. Okay. I don't like clicking around someone. We'll come back to that. Okay, let's, yeah. Yeah, why don't you go ahead with your other, the rest of your report, we'll come back to the special education.
So just one other thing I wanted to mention, that we've been working this year to establish relationships with the... So, just one other thing I wanted to mention, that we've been working this year to establish relationships with the community in a number of different ways, this falls to me in a large degree, but, um, I've been meeting with people in the Marlboro government, among others, and recently met again with the mayor, and we talked about ways in which the school could continue to meet with people in the larger school community and work on ways of sharing, uh, our best practices. It's part of what charter schools are meant to do, to help, uh, show what they've found to be successful to other schools and attempt to help, uh, spread those. So, to that end, we, this year, we had a, um, a first annual educators exchange where we sent out invitations to all the educators in the surrounding cities and towns, all the superintendents, the principals, and the teachers, uh, to come to the school and, uh, meet our department chairs, view our classes, have lunch here, basically spend the day learning about what we're doing and then learn from what they're doing. We, we got a, we didn't get a great response, we, we did have, uh, one gentleman come, who's the academic leader at, uh, the, um, uh, Esbit Valley Regional Technical School. The others, um, said they couldn't come this year, but we're gonna continue doing that. But when I was meeting with the mayor the other day, uh, he also, we, we talked about this, among other things, and he mentioned that he's very interested in making sure that AMSA's able to share as much as possible with the other schools. And in fact, all the schools share, so he's talking about getting together with the, um, administrators at the, um, in Marlboro, you know, superintendent, there's a new superintendent starting, I think, this week, interim superintendent, and then also meeting with people from, uh, the Esbit Valley, uh, Votech School, and even some of the private schools in the area, so that we can, uh, share. The mayor's very happy that the Marlboro has a range of choices for people. He thinks it really adds a lot of strength to the city, and he thinks it's a, something he wants to promote. So, I just thought I'd mention that that's something we, we're looking forward to doing, uh, probably meeting with, um, some of these people even over the summer. Another thing I thought I just mentioned is the, is that recently, one of our students was honored, uh, in Marlboro for his contributions to the community by volunteering at the Marlboro Library, and I, it was in the newspaper, uh, just last couple days. I'm trying to find his name, but I think I, I don't have the clipping here. But the mayor brought this up, he said, "Yeah, we, we honored one of your students the other day." Uh, he's a high school student who's been working as a volunteer at the local library, and typically, the, uh, youth commission in Marlboro honors people for youth service. His name is Mahish Mahendakar, Mahendarkar. So, anyway, I thought that's worth mentioning, that, uh, the city is, um, you know, through at least its representative, the mayor is happy with what AMSA's bringing to the city, and has been, uh, interested in, uh, recognizing our students.
Okay, we'll get back, and now we have the special education information.
So, uh, we put this together, the special ed, um, administrators put this together, and they looked at, uh, there were sixty-three IEP meetings this year, so they looked at those sixty-three IEP entries, and they went through a variety of categories to see, uh, how the school was doing in this area. And as you can see at the top there, I don't know if we can make it smaller so you can see all of the comments there.
Is it, do you wanna just see the comments?
Well, no, I guess I could read them, but I guess the main points would be the two, uh, columns to the, to the left. So, where it says consent, for example, consent forms received within five days of request. Uh, so, consent form, consent to evaluate forms are mailed within five days of receiving the request. The areas that I think are worth pointing out, well, I think all of them are important, but there were six late meetings, uh, for test results reviewed within forty-five days of consent.
Can you explain what that is?
Yeah.
There's a lot of data here, and I just, I just picked the meeting and all out. These are just timelines, these are just timelines. This was a specific, um, request that's being addressed from last month.
Yeah.
There's, there's a state of the matter timelines.
Yeah, but as you scroll down, there's more.
So, what do you mean, late, six meetings late?
Okay, so, as I'm explaining that there were six meetings that were late. Uh, the reason for this was that there was a change in administration in the fall, and there was also some prob, there were some problems or challenges with some of the, one of the liaisons who's no longer with the school. So, this is an attempt to show where we're, uh, where we were not in compliance, the reason for it, and what we're looking to do in the future, so...
Do you mean the test results were, six of them were being late?
There were six late meetings that involved test results. So, the test results reviewed within forty-five days of consent, so six of those meetings were late.
Column A is the requirement, so the law says that test results have to be reviewed within forty-five days of consent. Out of sixty-three IEP meetings, six of them were late, and here's why.
And here's the reason why, so...
Who, who's the meeting with?
The meeting, the meeting is with the special education administrators, uh, and in some cases, with teachers who are involved as well, in some cases, guidance counselors. So, this is just an attempt to give you an overview, because there were, there were some concerns expressed about the compliance with the special education department. So, in response to that, we went back and looked at the sixty-three IEP meetings, and we went through and found the number of places where there is room for improvement. So, for example, as Jess pointed out, there's sixty-three meetings, uh, but there were six meetings that were late that related to the test results being reviewed within forty-five days of the consent. The reason for that was that there was an administrative change, rather abrupt, from the previous administration of special education in very early fall, and we dealt with that by hiring new people. In one case, there was a change again with the employee, because there was a problem with these late meetings. So, there was an attempt to identify and correct that problem. The general pattern is that when there were late meetings, if you look at, uh, number seven, the new IEP developed by the annual review date, there were thirteen meetings that were late. Eight were due to the administrative change, in other words, in between the time that one administration left and the new one got traction, there were some late meetings. Five are due to snowstorms or parent or AMSA request to reschedule. In some cases, the rescheduling put us out past the, the date that we had targeted, and then the meeting was late. So, the breakdown is eight due to administrative change, five due to various other causes, either weather, or parents, or, or AMSA rescheduling. Number eight, the categories new IEP provided within ten days of the IEP meeting. Five IEPs were mailed beyond ten days, which would, which would make them late. And again, the abrupt administrative change and the inaction of a former liaison who was, who was transitioned out in the fall. So, uh, the rest of the categories are all in compliance, and they involve sending out progress reports, the proper way to treat students who are older, parental notice of procedural safeguards, and then autism checklist and bullying, uh, uh, compliance reviewed at every team meeting. So, what the people did, specifically Ms. Houston and Ms. Pasternak, who work closely in special education coordination, they reviewed all the sixty-three IEPs, and this is the result of their, of their study, of their survey. So, I think in terms of what we can do to improve, uh, we're going to have training over the summer available for our special education staff to improve their ability to use data in writing their reports. That's something that we're signing up for, for example, number fourteen, uh, progress reports provide measurable data. We're gonna have staff, uh, have training on providing data for benchmarks on progress reports. In some cases, in the cases at the very top there where the meetings were late, those problems have been rectified by changes in staff, and those problems occurred in very large degree in the fall, when that transition was still going on. So, I guess the overall takeaway that I took away from it after reviewing this with the staff is that, yes, there were issues of compliance in the fall, but that there's been steady progress and that there was room to improve. We're looking at two things, instituting training, and then also, uh, improving on staff coming into the next school year, which we're working on over the summer.
Could you explain a little bit more about what you mean by, so I assume you're, you're saying you wanna hire staff? So, you're in, you're looking at staffing?
Yes, whether, whether that means changing the roles of some people, uh, where we think there would be a better alignment or better fit, or in some cases, adding additional.
Dr. McCleary, were you aware that these were late, and if not, or so, do you have controls in place now to be able to monitor that, so that if we start to go sideways again, that you'll, you'll be able to know?
Yeah, I think, uh, to answer your first question, I was aware that when the administrative changes were happening in the fall, that some meetings were, notifications weren't being made in a timely fashion. And so, when we realized that part of that was due, at least part of that was due to some of the staffing, then we moved to try to make changes in the staffing. But of course, that didn't happen overnight, I mean, we had to identify where we had a problem and then work to get somebody better in that position. When we started out the school year, uh, the previous administrator, who was, had oversight for special education, had, um, himself had a challenge, because a number of his staff didn't return, but they let him know that very late in August, uh, actually, the day before teachers returned. And so, as a result, he hired some folks from, uh, a temporary agency to fill that gap, and it was at least two of those people that ended up eventually being transitioned out, actually, more than two. And we've got permanent people to replace them that we think are doing a better job.
And so, do you, that's how, so do you, do you feel you have the right controls in place now to just know, like, if suddenly...
Yes.
You find out we're ten days late, or you just, you just have the right control?
Yes, part of that has to do with the particular personnel that are scheduling the meetings.
How many additional, um, staff members are you looking to add?
Uh, I think, uh, probably, uh, there's one position for an assistant, and then there is one, uh, probably half-time more position. I'm not...
How many are currently in the...
Total?
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Including all the Paris?
Yeah, if you include all the Paris, um, I don't know, probably, I don't know, I couldn't give you an accurate number.
Um, do you have anything more in your report?
No.
Okay, because actually, I thought that, following on with this, Allison, um, could you update on the, the first item under, well, the last item under chair business, but with this, can you talk about the special education task force?
Yes, absolutely, so, it, primarily it's consisting of three of us with Roger and Jessica Hennessy, and we have exchanged a lot of correspondence, but we did have our first meeting tonight, where I participated, my phone and Roger and Jessica had met in person. And we've set two goals, which I think will, uh, follow nicely with the report that Dr. McCleary gave. The first one, of course, is the compliance piece, and I think we've got better understanding now from the report as to where we are with that. The second part of what we're gonna do is look towards how do we make the task force meaningful in terms of special education in the school, so awareness, acceptance, inclusion, um, and we're developing that piece as well as we sort of move forward. But I think right now, with the compliance, uh, fact-finding that we're doing, we'll be able to take the information and develop recommendations that we can then present to the board and then discuss as a whole, and then move forward. We might increase the task force a little bit, get some outside involvement with other parents, so we can get their input, and to this idea of, again, the acceptance, the awareness piece of it, and then potentially come back and make another set of further recommendations to the board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this information that's on the spreadsheet has gotten submitted to the task force for them to review?
Um, this spreadsheet was only circulated today.
Okay. So...
Yeah, we, today was the first, and Ken, just a couple of other, because it's hard for me to hear sometimes. Today was our first meeting, um, you know, there was, uh, we had designed a list of information that we had wanted to get responses on from Dr. McCleary, the administration, and so, we're now gonna match up sort of what we've gotten, see if there's other pieces that we're still looking towards, um, and then again, looking at this idea of compliance. And then the other thing, there was a site visit in April from BEEF, and we wanna map it back eventually to what they see as attracting specialized kids, um, and retention. That's another component part of what we will be looking at.
I just wanna make sure that the spreadsheet we've been talking about has been passed on to the task force.
This spreadsheet...
It will be.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay. Before we leave this, um, are you all reviewing, uh, as part of your task force, the support that's being given to the PAC, and specifically, things like the, uh, recently, I think, came to some of our attention, that there were questions around what sort of support, for example, an AMSA email address and things like that, that we're gonna be, are you all addressing that as well?
Yes, part of the CPAC, uh, and understanding really how they operate and what support they provide from an outside perspective will absolutely be, uh, you know, part of what we're gonna do as the task force, and we are aware of everything that's been of concern, uh, to this idea with email. Of course, there is, um, you know, again, we're doing some fact-finding, but there is, there is, the organization of CPAC itself has a very important role, and so, addressing how that works within the, uh, connection with AMSA, who's responsible for, you know, setting up the email and funding it. These are other aspects to what we're looking at, and that will obviously kind of come in hand-in-hand with, uh, part with the compliance, but secondly, how do we move forward to make sure that, um, CPAC is assisting us in a meaningful way, and we're assisting them? And then, of course, that goes to the outreach recommendation to the school for that second piece of attracting specialized kids, and then the retention.
Yeah, there have been a number of things that have been done by the special education department to assist CPAC this year, which could form part of the information that would help out with that task force. I know that when I talked with, um, Ms. Houston, Ms. Pasternak, they, they had provided a number of, uh, areas where, uh, they had been assisting with the CPAC, and, uh, one of them involved paying for the dues for CPAC to be a member of the Massachusetts PAC, the over, the sort of statewide organization, printing materials for the workshops, uh, workshop on basic rights, uh, which was made available to anyone who is interested, uh, setting up and posting agendas for the CPAC meetings and so forth. So, there has been some, um, I think, a good amount of help given there, but, um, it's certainly something that I think we can explore with the, with the task force. I know that both Ms. Houston and Ms. Pasternak are interested in doing that, contributing to it.
I would just repeat what I said in the last, uh, meeting, that, uh, there's an offering of basic rights workshop, which taught, which informs special education parents about what their basic rights are. I think that's a good thing for us board members, I've attended the workshop three times. I think every time I've attended one, I learn new things, or maybe I... I think every time I've attended one, I learn new things, or maybe I hear new things.
Okay, any other questions on this topic? We'll go back to our original agenda and we'll talk about chair business. The first thing, there are three ongoing complaints. It starts with the student enrollment that was assigned to Rick and Ed and you have it here.
So this is one with regards to the appropriate residency. And in this particular case, the individual went directly to DEES, also working with our administration, indeed, Dr. McLeary. And DEES has responded back some time ago now, I guess a month or two ago, with regards to basically saying that the AMSA approach relative to being in accordance with DEES guidelines and criteria for residency or charter school, that AMSA's was in alignment with that. And in essence, they validated that the approach that AMSA was taking was not, was in accordance with what they would expect. So at this point, from a board perspective, we're saying that that complaint is now closed from a board perspective. And that from an administration perspective, it would be the administration following those policies and procedures that we have in place with regards to what's appropriate for entire students to attend AMSA pertaining to where they desire. So that one we're saying is closed from a board perspective at this point.
So that's the task force recommendation. We actually need to vote to accept that. So we have to have, first of all, are there any questions? Or if not, then we can.
I'm sort of curious as to whether, I'm sure we're continuing to be vigilant on that. Have we found other cases this year as a result of the lottery process? If this trend has continued?
There have been other cases where in schools' judgment, people have been trying to, what they call game the system, for claiming residency in one of the core towns when they don't in fact reside there legitimately. So I think part of the benefit of having held people accountable this year has been that it's sort of served as a notice, I think, really, that the school will look closely at the applicants to make sure that they're really abiding by the spirit of the law. When I talked with the Department of Education about this in the fall, they confirmed very strongly that that was our responsibility to make sure that the spirit of the law is observed. And so we went forward making calls and bringing people in as needed in some cases where we thought that that had been a problem. And I think this year, it's been a continuing challenge, but we've gotten ahead of it in a sense so that we don't even, you know, when people are at the application process and we look closely at their residency status and we find anything that looks irregular, we've gotten in touch with them so that it really hasn't gotten beyond that. And I think as we go forward, we're going to see that that's going to have a beneficial effect for everybody, really. Certainly the school's responsibility to make sure that people don't take advantage of it. It's something that the Department of Ed said it was sort of a backhanded compliment to the school in a way that people are trying to get into it so much that they want to find a way to misrepresent their residency, but it still presents a challenge.
So Ev, can I just, so the complaint was from somebody who, can you just refresh, the complaint was somebody who said that we're letting somebody in without doing due diligence? Or somebody who was not let in?
No, the complaint was one where we had a student who was presently enrolled in AMSA. And then administratively, it was determined that that particular student or family didn't meet the criteria for being able to enroll in AMSA from a residency standpoint.
And so AMSA asked that person to leave, and then that person filed a complaint?
Yes.
And so the board has investigated the procedures used throughout the process and has determined that the school has done what it should have done?
Yes, but not so much the board as much as the individual went directly to DEES.
Okay.
So they elevated it to the next level, and DEES came back with a written report.
That said, the school did what it should have done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So with that clarification, I can entertain a motion to accept this complaint? Okay, Chris? Okay, and we need to do this by roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, so that's accepted. The second complaint is a civil rights allegation, a civil rights allegation. And that has been assigned to myself and Allison. And we have met with the complainant, and that is in process. So we will give an update at each group meeting. The final complaint that was received was a discrimination complaint. And that is very recent. If I didn't actually talk to you about this. But this one given that, I'll actually give you some background on this later, but actually this one I'm going to assign to you and me as well. So that is a good one, I think, to begin with.
So what's the update on the, what is the update on the one that you and Allison are doing?
We have met with that person already, and we're going for the investigation. All right, so the next topic is trustee elections. We have three people who are up for election for their second term. And that would be Allison and Tom and myself. We all joined about the same time, and our terms end in next week. So we are all standing for reelection.
So is this just to be?
Trustees.
Just to the board, it's not an officer?
For our second term.
And how long are your terms?
Three years.
Three years? Okay, Derek, sorry, thanks.
Yeah, it's right there on the table.
Oh, I see, through nineteen ninety years.
Yep, from July 1st, 2016 until June 30th, 2019.
So are you ready for a motion?
Yes, I think that's good.
So I'd like to propose that we nominate Allison, Pauline, and Tom to their respective positions that they're currently holding today for the next three years, the remainder of their terms. Say again?
We have to do it individually.
Oh, that's right.
We may elect only some.
So the very first one then would be Allison, okay? That she be re-nominated, or she be nominated to continue on her term for the next three years, July 2016 through June 2019.
Have we confirmed that she wants it?
Allison, are we confirmed?
Can I tell you I'm sitting here with great chagrin? I actually say, I've been back to the third eight hours, guys. But I sleep hotel California, once you check in, you don't check out.
So we need a second?
Yeah, we need a second?
A second.
Okay, Scott, second. We need to do a roll call vote for this, and Allison is going to abstain.
Yes. What does Allison have to?
Yes.
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 Yes, what does Allison have to abstain?
She's supposed to vote for her own, for herself.
Who?
Yeah. That's how we always do this. Okay, next person?
Next, we have Pauline as chair of the board. And I am proposing that we nominate her to continue in that position for the remainder of her term.
It's just as a trustee, not as a chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, trustees.
We might demote her.
For July 2016 through June 2019.
Yep.
A second, yeah.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We have one more.
And the last one, Tom, as trustee, continuing on for the next three years, July 2016 through June 2019, that he be nominated to remain in his position.
A second, yeah.
Okay, and roll call vote there?
I'm thinking.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
You gonna vote?
Oh, yes.
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 Okay, great.
Yeah, Mike, you can send a link to the videotape. You have it queued up for.
I did that on purpose. He understands.
Next, the PTO has nominated, PTO executive committee has nominated Liz Saul to be the parent rep for July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. So I would like to make a motion to accept that we accept their nomination and that be a place for Liz as the parent rep.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Allison?
Oh, Allison?
Yeah, I was waiting, yeah.
Yes.
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 Okay, great, thank you, Liz, for accepting this role for a second year. It's been great having you. It's been great having you as parent rep this year. And so we're very glad that you will be joining us for the second year. And then finally, the faculty has voted for Tom Azarito to be the faculty rep to the board for the period from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017. So I would like to make a motion to accept.
Before we have a motion, there's some question marks on Tom's end date. And I didn't know if that was just a typo, or are we actually concerned about him?
I think that was a typo, that's what was on there, but then when we presented Allison. No, it's June 30th, 2017. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the faculty nomination and appoint Tom as.
Shouldn't it be, I'm sorry, shouldn't it be 2018? Isn't it?
One year.
But he can be re-elected obviously.
Yes.
Second? We need a second?
My second.
Okay, okay, sure. Sorry, go ahead.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Allison?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm allowed to vote, but absolutely yes.
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 Great, Tom, congratulations. I didn't get a chance to talk about this, but would you like to make any statements now or start to do that next time?
I think next time is fine.
Okay. All right.
See, he's always shown a good political sense. Don't commit to anything verbally.
So next, as part of the annual meeting, we also go through our committee assignments. So this is the current committee structure. We obviously will be replacing Jess with Tom, but he does not necessarily need to join the education committee.
Yeah, he does.
What?
Yes, he does.
You know the Matthew Jones of Effort Committee would like, and I will talk with him.
I already did.
So everyone, take a look at this. This is just how it has been this past year. This is the formal standing committees, the four standing committees. There's a separate on your page, there's a separate one on task force assignments. We just created two more. But these are the, oh, Effort's out though. It's not as of, these are not as of 2014, 15, they're as of now.
Yeah, I have 2014, 15 in my packet.
Yeah, I don't know why that is. The headings came out wrong. Because these were the task for, okay, these are committee assignments 2015, 16. So can everyone check their committee assignments? And are, oh, there's two of them. And do you want to remain on these committees?
What that is is not what we have in our packets.
Yeah, I just realized that. So this is the committee one, there's a separate one, which is the task force.
Okay, we have task force in our packets.
It should be one committee and one task force.
Okay.
So this is the committee one. And I have not, we haven't discussed this, but I don't know if people feel like they want to change any of the committees that they're on. We are not voting for committee chairs, the committee chairs stay, that's every other year. So it's just a matter of whether you want to stay on this particular committee or anyone has any comments about moving to a different committee. Except for Tom.
Yeah, so what do we do about Tom? Can we, Tom just stuff that at education?
No, so Tom can choose. Tom can go to a couple of committee meetings and then we can determine. So officially for the committees, for trustees, I appoint people to the committees. And then the committee chairs can appoint anyone else that they want to. So Tom won't be on here, but everyone else will stay on here. So I'm going to appoint everyone to this committee as a show. And you also move to task force. Task force, these are already the ones that are underway. So this is just a reminder sort of of who is doing what. Yes, this is the current one, the one on the screen.
I started with task force, they kind of, they come and go.
Yeah, they do come and go. They do, they come and go. So this is just how it is for now. Just more to remind everybody, these are your, this is what you've signed up for. And they are sort of coming and going. Like the collective bargaining task force is really going to be gone because after today.
No.
Of course, he's got a little C over on a new task force.
I think as we go forward, I think we should call a task force, the survey action planning task force.
Okay, yeah.
That's different from, you know, the governance and the oversight of the survey. Right, because the action plan.
Okay, survey, action planning, task force, that's our one. Okay.
Scott, we'll do that.
And do you have to be a board member to be on a task force?
No.
No.
No, so like, these are just the board members that are on here. But like the special ed.
Right, I know committees, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, the special ed task force have Jessica Hennessy as well as Roger Jarrett on it right now. I think some of these you have to, plus department obviously have to be board members, but the others do not. All right, that, wanted to remind everyone. Okay, so now we move on to collective bargaining contract. And I put Mike here to talk about the contract that we've been making. We have it all in my box.
So is it?
Can you just sort of summarize the items?
Yeah, I'm not sure how detailed to summarize. I do know what we're going to do. I do want to acknowledge the faculty team. And, you know, it was a very interesting experience. I have not participated in this before. That was a tricky conversation. And what I found more than anything was that the faculty members who were participating made it easy to negotiate in the end because they were so authentic in their passion and desire to do the right thing. It never felt emotional or self-serving or anything like that. I just want to compliment that team because it's got to be hard. They're defending a constituency base that, anytime you have a base that size, I'm sure they're not completely aligned, and they have to find a way to do that. And so fascinating experience to be a part of, but made easier because of the quality and passion of the folks that were there. And so Allison, I don't know if there's anything you'd add to that, but Allison, I would talk about that on a regular basis.
You know, I would just say, Mike, that I think that the entire process of deal went very smoothly from Effort from all sides, but it was an integral process. We had good conversations, sometimes a little difficult, but everybody was professional. And I think that made all the difference. And we really worked together from both sides of the table. So it was all in all a very positive experience, and I feel very good about it.
So I think the contract with Allison was a great partner. I think this contract speaks for itself. I think it's a good contract. You know, we talked about this evaluation component. It was something that was very important to me and was initiated by the teachers and I think made better through the whole process. I think we've added, in this evaluation process, a level of rigor and discipline that will help to ensure that the evaluations are followed in a very structured way, that they're followed up with an email, followed up with a meeting that's available till now. And it really allows for regular, ongoing documented conversations. And I think that'll help eliminate what's been so concerning in the past, which has led to trust issues, which is that they felt more arbitrary. And I think we've begun to eliminate that. Dr. McLeary and the administration team were particularly helpful, I think, to this process with the board and also the negotiating team. So that's a piece that's very exciting. I think we tried to meet a lot of. So that's a, a piece that's very exciting, I think we, uh, tried to meet, uh, a lot of the demands from the, uh, teachers, weren't able to accommodate all of them, but, um, I think in the end, uh, I think we're better this year than we were for the previous contract, for everybody.
That's great. So I would like to remind everyone before we vote, this is a two-year contract, um, so this will be covering the period from August twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen through, um, twenty eighteen, basically.
And also, we can remind, the teachers have already voted yes on this.
Yes, the teachers have voted yes, um, they voted yes.
We, we voted, um, on Friday, the last day of school.
I have a motion to accept. Second.
Okay, um, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Allison?
Again, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Alex Stein?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, congratulations. Thank you all. Excellent. Really, both, um, Allison and Mike spent an incredible amount of time, there were a number of negotiating sessions, we all, as a board, obviously had a number of executive sessions to discuss, it took us many hours to come to this, uh, it's great that we were able to come to.
Double their pay.
Double their pay, you now get, you know.
Two slices of pizza. And as Mike said, too, the teachers who run that negotiating committee also put in all of those hours, so, uh, thank you to all of you who put in so many hours.
Okay. Regional issues task force, Ken?
So, uh, the, we had our kickoff meeting on June fifteenth, um, we had two, uh, parents from Maynard, including myself, two from Clinton, uh, two from Hudson, including Lisa Anderson, uh, one from Marlboro, who is, and one from Framingham, uh, so there's representation sort of across, and, you know, while it's focused on, uh, while we are trying to, you know, get some sense of what's happening in the other three core towns, we are interested in trying to solve these problems more broadly. Uh, if you remember, the, the, we have a charter responsibility to make sure that we continue to serve, uh, all four core towns, which was the genesis of this. So on June fifteenth, we had a kickoff meeting, not every person could attend, but we had great attendance, plus a couple of guests. We spent some time, uh, identifying some, some issues, uh, such as transportation, obviously, uh, transportation is a big issue, and, uh, not only bus transportation, but carpooling, uh, after-school activities and that type of, type of thing, so that's, that's one issue. The other one is how they create, uh, a greater sense of, uh, the asset community early on, particularly with like incoming sixth graders, but other incoming new students as well, we have a lot of new, uh, students that are coming in, uh, not just sixth graders this year. Uh, but then even after, after the school year starts, what are the activities that, uh, we should be doing in a school to try to incorporate? You know, there are certain events, like the Wachusett hike, uh, for the sixth graders, uh, but I've heard comments a number of times that, you know, we ought to have a number of those activities going on throughout the course of the year, within grades to try to get the, each of the classes together, but also across the, the, uh, the school as a whole. Uh, so we had a good, uh, we had a good, uh, meeting, uh, and broken some teams to address. Um, we had tentatively set, um, uh, a meeting for June thirtieth, but due to a family emergency on my part, I'm gonna have to be out of town on June thirtieth, and so we moved it up to June twenty-eighth, so that's next Tuesday, in the lower school cafeteria, and I'll have an announcement, whatnot, but we just got that coordinated, uh, today, so that's late breaking news. It would be helpful, I think, to have representation from the school on the committee, uh, obviously, uh, members of the faculty, they hear, uh, uh, things that students say about the difficulties they have, guidance council probably do as well, members of administration, so it would be helpful, and I reached out to Doctor McLeary, uh, to see if we could, uh, get some representation. While that hasn't happened yet, one of the things that he did do is, uh, send out a survey to, uh, the department chairs to try to gather some information, which was, uh, very helpful, it's sort of an initial stage setting, so I'll be sharing that along with some of the data, uh, that, uh, I've gotten from, uh, the administration, uh, in response to data requests. So, things are going well, I, I'm trying to get some momentum going, uh, before we sort of go into some hiatus, I, I, if things work out as we sort of planned, we'll have some teams working, uh, towards addressing some, uh, addressing some things. I have to say, though, in all likelihood, we're going to, you know, we'll, we'll probably, we're going, you know, w- one of the things that we'd like to do is do some surveying, uh, wholesome, uh, meetings and stuff like that, that clearly is gonna be much easier to do once, uh, school has started back up, but we wanna lay some groundwork, uh, now. Um, I think one of the things that in particular, uh, the reason why I'd like to lay some of the groundwork right now is we've identified some issues around transportation and community building that, you know, it would be helpful, uh, for the incoming sixth graders. I know of one sixth grader, incoming sixth grader, no, excuse me, incoming seventh grader, I believe, who came to, um, sort of the, the evening when, um, uh, you know, the kids got together and so forth, and, uh, felt, you know, so sort of alone in that whole thing, and that there was not, uh, a sort of basic attempts to made to try to bring, uh, kids from the outside, uh, the non-Marlboro core towns, that this child, who was already on the, the, you know, sort of cusp of accepting to come and dance or not, made a decision not to, just based on that, well, uh, so again, was already leaning that way towards not, uh, but, um, uh, her parent had, uh, encouraged her to come to this, but that event, again, not building community just sort of was a tipping point.
Can you, what, what event was that, Ken, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
What, what event are you referring to?
So this is the event where they bring the kids together, uh, for like a pizza night and stuff.
There's a pizza night for new students?
Correct.
Do you know when that was?
Recently, I don't include it.
Two weeks ago, two weeks ago? I just, I didn't know which event it was.
So I, I don't wanna overblow a single data point, and especially in the case that I know that, you know, she was already wavering and so forth, um, but you gotta ask yourself the question of, you know, if we were more welcoming, you know, how many more students would we be picking up from, uh, the non, uh, non-core towns, and given the numbers, the numbers are, are, are not, uh, it don't give indication that we may not be serving. Now, there may, in the end, maybe we can't do a whole lot of things, but I'm hoping that, uh, you know, that we will, uh, be able to make some progress towards that.
Just one point of clarification, it's not non-core towns, but non-Marlboro towns.
Excuse me, non, yeah, so the non-Marlboro core town.
Yeah, probably, right.
Although we do have representatives from.
Non-core towns.
Non-core towns, so. And I think that's it. Remind the board.
Do you need I hand a support from the board?
No, you know, I, I think at this point, um, at this point, we've just gotta get, you know, our legs under us and, uh, uh, start doing some things as a team, I mean, obviously, if anybody's interested in coming to the meetings and so forth, and just getting in that way, they'll be fine, but, uh, um, you know, I, I think we're, we're just, it's still in the data gathering mode at this point, so thank you for asking.
Ken, if I may, um, I'm wondering if you said that some, um, people in the school that could help you, I'm wondering if you've reached out to, um, Maureen Evans, I know she works with the Leaders of Tomorrow, which is a student leadership group we have on campus, and sort of, um, if they could kind of, uh, you know, hey, there's a new kid here, be a buddy, or look out for that person, or that kind of role, if, if, if that's something you've investigated?
So I've reached out to Doctor McLeary, and Doctor McLeary is considering.
Okay, um, so rounding out chair business, there are a couple of things that I would like to announce. One is that, following up with, uh, our charter renewal by DEES last year, two years ago, we had, um, conditions that were placed on our renewal. DEES came in April, and we had the site visit, um, they removed those conditions, however, they did add other conditions, and so I actually had a discussion with, um, with our representative from DEES today, and we talked through sort of the timeline. One of the conditions was for the board to have a tool, to, to explain the tool that the board was going to use to evaluate the executive director, and so I talked about the board on track, so we'll talk about that in governance, um, but that was, that tool is acceptable, um, to them, and so we'll meet that. And another condition is that there be a formal evaluation system put in place for the rest of the administrative team, um, not the faculty, because obviously we have that, that, that Doctor McLeary will be designing some sort of tool, and we have it till the end of September, to submit these to DEES. We'll also be continuing to submit our board, um, minutes and agendas and things like that. And so we actually talked about a couple of other things as well, one of them being, um, the, this, um, issue of collaborating with Marlboro, as there was actually a, um, letter of concern written by a Marlboro Summit committee member, uh, taking a lot of those answers publicly, available data, and DEES just wrote back, um, indicating that they obviously are very accountable, that we're meeting all our accountability requirements, and it's very supportive, so.
So. They go through this period of evaluating us, they bring the charter with conditions, and then they can change the conditions?
Well, so, if you take a look, uh, they've continued to gather information.
Yeah, they keep.
Okay, and based on that information, some of which includes, uh, views that have been expressed directly to DEES by, you know, parents and others, okay? So, based on that, they are expanding and modifying the conditions, and this is a, this is a pretty serious, uh, exercise here.
And which would not be, uh, these interim changes in conditions would not be occurring if we hadn't gotten conditions first.
Some of them actually say ongoing, like the thing that you sent out, it actually says ongoing.
Right, there are a couple that seem new.
Yeah, the, the evaluation that we, the conditions, the ongoing one is that we submit our minutes and our.
So if we had gotten a condition-free, uh, charter, would we still be subject to changing conditions?
No, cause there, there would not be, um, those, they, they would just come and do their sort of interim site visit, and this, it, they did their interim site visit in April, as we changed.
Well, so the first set of conditions, I don't think, you know, to me, I was, uh, if you look at the conditions, once they're, they're directly related to, uh, a lot, a lot of the churn that we've been experiencing over that previous year. And so, uh, you know, our re-charting went forward, there were some conditions put on, I would view those as conditions where essentially, we're saying, look, we want an org chart, we wanna see your minutes, we wanna see several things, we wanna make sure that the things that we saw here are continuing, and, and, and these are sort of routine types of things. The conditions that are, the new conditions, though, I would view much more seriously, and I guess what I'm asking is, so we have till September thirtieth to the dress date, and so what is our plan to do then?
Well, they're, basically, there are three, one is a continuation of a past condition, which is that the board submit the minutes and agenda and so forth. The other two are evaluation of the director, which we already have in place, in which this bag indicated today would be acceptable, and the third one involves giving the Department of Education, uh, an evaluation, an indication of how we're going to, how I would be evaluating the principal, the vice-principal, and so on. So, I, I would say it's fairly routine, these are routine things that they require. When they, when they came to the site visit, to make the site visit in April, they did say, uh, what is your evaluation instrument for the ED, and they just wanted clarification, she didn't completely understand at that time that we had, that we were going, that the board was going to use the Board on Track's instrument. So really, the, the remaining one, if, if it could be considered new, would be that we clarify the way that the director, myself, would evaluate the, uh, other administrators. It's, you know, in my experience, it's something that the department requires of every charter school.
We need to provide, um, what that tool's actually going to be, so in my conversation with her today, I told her what we were planning on doing, what, what we will discuss today, um, and then after tonight, I would send her the, at least for our piece of it, the, what exactly that process is for Board on Track. And then Doctor McLeary needs to submit by September.
End of September.
End of September, okay, September thirtieth.
Is it just the principal and the assistant principal, or is it anybody who's not covered under the CBO, so for instance, department chairs or the special ed chair?
No, she indicated in the letter, be assistant principal or vice-principal and principal, but she didn't indicate that it would have to be, it would have to be something for the department chairs.
So this, uh, this new request soon will be posted along with the board materials for this meeting?
Well, it's probably good. Another announcement that I wanted to make, but Roger stole my thunder, was that the Stentori Eagles Foundation has been, and the asset foundation have merged, so that is, I just did want to, of course, now going to publicly thank Roger and the stakeholders to bring this together, because it's a diplomatic exercise over the course of the year, with the foundation members on the sets, and that's great.
Can you, do you know how much money that is, once we've put the two together?
Oh, I don't know what it is once we put the two together, but all the amount that is remaining in the old foundation, which is much larger, and remember, the new foundation hasn't done a fundraising, so it's just that people that have been, um, have made donations to it, or if you buy on Amazon and you designate the Stentori Eagles Foundation, then all your purchases, it will, it will go to, um, whatever percentage Amazon gives, goes to the Stentori Eagles, so I do that every time, and we buy them, and it's all along. Um, the final thing that I wanted to talk about on a chair business, actually, there's two other things. Um, the October board meeting is currently scheduled for, I think, the third week, and, um, we need to change that one to the fourth week in October to accommodate the auditors. So the, the schedule of the auditors is that those finance committees have to schedule on a certain date, that's a very long, um, meeting, and then, um, we'll come on, whatever that next one is, I think it's October twenty-nine?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven? Whatever Thursday is, yeah, October twenty-seven, that's it. Okay, so I just want to make everyone aware, so you probably saw a couple of weeks ago, I put in all the board meetings for the next year in Board on Track, and I left the October one alone, because I wanted to sort of just make sure that you're all aware, and that's the reason that I did the change, so that one's.
Do we, do we know that it won't bump up into any, um, religious holidays, October can be?
So the final thing that I want, um, that I wanted to talk about is that, is part of, um, the effort to recruit new board members, one thing that I just want to, um, just make the call out there to the entire community, but also sort of the current board members to think about, is ways to have people contribute onto committees, and I wanted to just discuss with you, if you thought it was a good idea for me to send out a field broad raise, um, the parent committee, talking about that specifically, because, you know, our committees are open, um, there's no reason that we can't have non-trustees on them, uh, and in many cases, it's very helpful to bring more progressives onto committees, and then they get an understanding of what board business is about, and how.
I, I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
Yeah, especially in some of the roundtables, folks say, we're, we're here to help, so it's a great way out, it's cool.
Okay, I mean, I think that parent engagement is something that we certainly want to encourage, um, and it would be a way of, you know, I think we've made some effort, obviously. And it would be a way of, you know, I think we've made some effort, obviously, to, to make board meetings more transparent, but just in, in terms of understanding the dialogue, maybe it's harder for that to come across.
And I think also making more transparency in the process by which one becomes a board member is, is positive as well. So that, I think, might help contribute to that, so it's a good idea. So anyone can join a committee, parents can join a committee, and non-parents, sort of, you know.
Yeah, non-parent, I mean Marlboro community members can join.
I'm gonna call my mom, see if she wants to join.
That's good, call on the agent.
Yeah.
All right, okay. With that, we're gonna go on to our committee report. So we are actually not having a finance committee report this month, but you do have updated financials in your packet. If there's any questions on those, you can always ask Tom. Governess.
So we have a number of officer elections that we need to vote on. And I'm assuming we have to do those individually, or do those as a slate individually? So in essence, it's the incumbents, there are no changes that are being proposed. And so the first one would be Pauline to remain as a officer in the position of chair of the board. And I would nominate her to continue in that position.
To your term.
Yeah, I have a question, did, like, how does this work? If someone wanted to run against someone, do they put their, I don't know how this process works. Like, would they send their name to you that I want to run for a position? Or you're just, you're just, like, this is my first.
It was discussed in the office.
What do you think, Scott?
No, I'm, no, I'm just wondering.
No, I agree.
I do not want a part of that, for the record, I'm just wondering how the process works. And if someone did want to, how would they go up on putting their name on, that's all I'm asking.
I nominate Scott.
No, I deny nomination.
God, that's a very position.
No, 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 no. I'm just asking for clarification.
I, I agree, I would like clarification on that too.
That's all.
So is it, it's, so if, if, if somebody wants to run for an officer of the board, they go to governance?
Correct.
Okay.
And so if we're voting here right now, and somebody decides on the spot that, hey, I want that, they cannot do it?
No, of course they can, I mean, governance, governance is making the recommendation for these positions, but yes, if someone on the spot wants to.
Other nominations.
Clearly, I was just looking for the process, that's it.
So, but to your point, then maybe it's appropriate to say nominations early?
Yes, that's all, that's all I'm saying. Because otherwise, you're just saying, okay, this person spoke. When it's someone here wanted to be on one of those positions, they should have the right. I mean, I don't want any of them.
Self-nominate.
Yes, people can self-nominate. It's just that with, and, you can't.
I, no, yeah, we can't be off.
That's.
Oh, and I was gonna do it. Think what I could do with that budget.
I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Good, good question.
No, it's a good question, I mean.
Okay, so going once, going twice, nominations are closed.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, okay. So we have Pauline being nominated for chair, continuing on as chair of the board to a year term. And we would need a second for that.
Second.
I'll second.
I'm sure I'll second, I'll be really quick.
Okay, we need a roll call then.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you.
Okay, second, we have Rick for co-chair, and I'll ask the same question, are there any other individuals?
Vice chair.
I'm sorry. Vice chair, are there any individuals who would like to nominate others or self-nominate for a vice chair? Not?
Just to clarify, this is two-year term again?
Two-year, two-year term. If not, nominations are closed. And we will proceed forward, and would like to nominate Rick for vice chair.
Second.
All right.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
All right, nominations are now open for secretary. First one, we have Allison.
God, you're not late.
No, no.
Okay. Going once, going twice, nominations are closed, and this is a two-year term, awesome. Nominations are closed. And I make a motion that we nominate Allison for the next two years for secretary.
Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the last one we have is treasurer. The nominations are open for treasurer, we have Tom, who is the incumbent with that position. Anybody like to nominate others or self-nominate for treasurer?
Tom?
No.
Going once, twice, nominations are closed. So I would propose that we, I nominate Tom to continue on as treasurer.
Second.
One year, two years, I'm not exactly sure, two years.
Two years.
Oh, two years.
Yeah, okay.
And I heard a second thing.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
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 All right.
All right, I think that is it.
Thank you. In for officer elections, but now moving on to the next.
Okay, ED evaluation process has been mentioned, referred to a number of times. Just finished talking about our vote to charter requirements. And what our track is, is the process that we were looking at in our last governance meeting. We had our bill, we had our board on track, which is our advisory board that we contract with. We had them, our governance rep call in and actually walk us through the board on track module that they have as charter system. Very comprehensive, very robust, I think the comments may make Pauline miss something better than we've ever used in the past. And very much for me, reminds me sort of from a corporate standpoint, three sixty evaluations. So really comprised of self-evaluation of the ED or by the ED. The board does the evaluation of the ED, as well as direct reports do that evaluation. It's a module that they've had in place since 2012. The question that I asked was, how pervasive is it? In response, was they've had over seventy-five different organizations use this tool with good success. And Pauline had generated a prior email, which we talked about in more detail, some sixty questions. Questions are all replicated by board questions, ED questions, and also direct reports that are all answering, responding to the same questions, and covering all core competencies or core competencies that relate to culture of excellence, driving academic excellence, student performance, management. So very broad and in-depth. And so that is the tool that we have reviewed at our last governance meeting, that we're moving ahead with at this point. And we've set up sort of a timeline relative to the different aspects of that first big ED self-evaluation, which I believe Dr. McCleary has already conducted that part. And we had a date there, June 20th, June 27th, we're asking that board members follow through and do their portion of the response to the questions, as well as the direct reports. And on the 30th, that information, we're looking at being shared among the governance committee itself. And then at our next governance meeting in July, we will spend time actually pulling together themes that, so that a summary memo can be then developed, which we'll be sharing with Dr. McCleary. So that's our little rough timeline.
Do you have discussion about, okay, this, you know, please ask a question. Do you have discussion about what percentage of the board should complete that evaluation?
Every day.
It seems to me that we should have a hundred percent through the board.
Yeah, it should be a hundred percent of the board.
With the exception of the faculty who was, I believe, not eligible.
Correct.
So whether it's me or Tom, neither of us are eligible.
Right, and I think the board on track, the invitation or the notice went out.
Yeah, to the board members. Now, what did not go out, however, since direct reports, because that was something that I did want to hear, just confirmed that, that, you know, that's the, that was governance committee's recommendation, but I did want to have something.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your.
On whether the board agrees with the governance committee's recommendations, how all direct reports provide input as well. So that, that has not gone out to the board yet.
So you want to have some discussion in there?
That I want to have some discussion.
I think that should be voluntary.
Yeah.
I think it should be a hundred percent of the board, but I think the direct report should be mandatory.
Another question that I had.
Really, I think it should be mandatory, but I think it should be. Well, so, 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 I encourage, so let me ask you a question. So the, the input, because the input is not necessarily confidential.
Good question.
It is.
It is.
Is this a?
The input is confidential.
I think, I think some people, they not want to do that. And I think it's, I think it's an at-will type of thing, that we have to.
How many, how many direct reports are we talking about? So we talked about the, the principal, vice principal, the department chair, is that?
Well, no, so that's actually something else to discuss, because the department chairs report to the principal, but that's a, you know, we actually talked about governance, whether to include the department chairs or not, and obviously, that is a question. They, they obviously have a lot of input and are very close to teachers. We could ask the department chairs.
Well, so, so I think the question about whether you have direct reports, it gets to an issue of comfort, and I agree with Mike. You know, we want people to feel, so if you do a three sixty, you know, so the, the information goes into another company. So that's happening here too.
Correct.
And then based on, you know, based on a certain minimum number of reporting of people who, of raiders, who provided input, then that information is, is anonymized, is gathered together. And typically, if you're providing narrative comments, those narrative comments are reported on as they were, as they were input. Is that what's happening here?
Yes, that is what.
So, so when the direct reports, their information would be, would be assembled together all in one group?
Right, it'd be all in one group.
The only, sorry, let's just say the only, to, to, can I have, got some passion on this, I guess. So the only thing for me.
I might should work.
The, so all literature says, we follow this in our company, that anything fewer than five is the number that it does not get reported. So if we have four respondents, you put all that information, that data is discarded. Well, it's not discarded, but it's not provided as a report, a, it's, we gotta kind of.
Well, so that's why I was asking what the numbers are.
Very small numbers, that makes it uncomfortable.
Well, so, so the advantage, the advantage of combining them all together, I hate to get into this, that level of detail, but the advantage of combining them all together is you get a larger rate of error. Therefore, it takes fewer, a smaller percentage of the raider in order to have the information reported out.
Put it all together, if we have four, three people, that would be good.
No, I, well, so we do it on three, so, you know. So, so, and the reason why is, is if you nominate eight and three report, you don't know which three. Okay, I mean, you, you don't know which three reported out, which, which three didn't. But anyway, whether it's three or five, it is multiple, okay?
Yes, it's not gonna report.
Now, the disadvantage of that is, is that the department chairs may have a different view of their interactions with the executive director than say, the principal or vice principal does, okay? And so, you know, sometimes it's helpful to have them separate. I don't see how you can do that in this particular situation.
So the, the way that we have done it in the past is that board members have interviewed, you know, the direct reports. A couple of years ago, we did it that way, routines of two board members, interview them, that was a very.
I, I think, I think where I'm following this, I would like to invite the direct reports and try to, to expand this out to, to, to participate, okay? And that would, to me, that would include the department.
Okay, direct reports.
Why would department chairs, direct reports, and executive directors? And why would they interview the direct report? School leadership, but it's direct reports.
Yeah, but it's a, it's, you're evaluating the executive director, he's the face of the school, and they have a different perspective of that.
Okay, it's legitimate.
Like, direct report is what it's meant for, and that's what direct report means. So if I could just.
I'm trying to think, the questions, I think, are general enough.
That they could answer them, yeah, is it like.
Yeah.
Because none of the questions were, you know, a month, yeah, the supervisory kind of.
Right, the non-chieving relations.
Yeah, it wasn't that, it really were these more like general things. Do you feel this person has integrity?
So.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, so I want the data, but I'm uncomfortable with the numbers, because I think the danger is that when you get to these small numbers, you run the risk of making some very big judgments. And sometimes, the people who fill out these surveys are the bookends, and you're not really, so these are just very, these just feel like very small numbers to me.
Well, so if you add in department chairs, exactly, more numbers.
What's up?
If you add in the department chairs, and it's actually more numbers.
Well, that, I think that's, that would make me more feel more comfortable.
And this is also a tool we designed for charter schools that has more numbers. And they've got seventy-five cases that have been due.
Right.
So I think Mike's caution is a valid caution, that we have to look at these numbers in light of what they are, once they're, once they've been given out.
It's how you treat the data, what you do with it, right?
But I'll be honest with you, I know you say it's small numbers, but if there's seven direct reports and five are doing or reading four, that's, that's over fifty percent.
Well, it's, it, but if it's three, like, I, I'm just trying to figure out what feels okay to us, right? So maybe four feels okay, but what if three, I just want to, like, that's why I asked earlier about, for us, a hundred percent of the board feels right to me. That feels like we have the all the data that we want. When we start to get into these other things, I just, I just wanna, you know, we can put it out there, but if we come back and we have two or three direct reports, we just have to decide if that's material enough for us to action on.
Yeah, so.
I just, and I don't know, I don't know what the, it feels something.
I mean, I just feel that their, their input is actually more valuable than ours.
Yeah, I want to hear it, I just, you have to be careful too.
Also, the, the data does not get reported back.
Yeah, we need to talk about that process, right, because the.
Committee holds the data.
The committee holds the data, I also went back and forth with her after the governance meeting, because they really recommend that the committee that compiles the information and creates sort of a report is done in closed session, right? To really have that, and then that the report is what is shared with the whole board. So we have to talk about that small group.
Well, you, how do you do it in closed session?
You, you don't do it in, you just have to do it in a small group, it's a small task force. They recommend three people, I think governance decided, you know, we should do it with five, but they recommend a much smaller number of people.
And then, so that small group produces a report that compiles all of the input? And then is that report then presented, like, at a public meeting like this?
Yeah, then that report, yeah, gets.
And then how does the public, or the, all of the stakeholders? I, I'm concerned that there might be a perception that, that that process is not transparent by going into a closed group.
Well, so first off, I don't think that's, what Pauline is saying is, and this is pretty standard practice. The raw data that goes in, there is, is a bunch of raw data that on its own, you know, needs, needs organization. And it's that organization that would, you know, that would create a report, okay, that would report. So if what you're saying is, how do we know that that is transparent? Well, that's, I think what the, I think that's what the board is required to do. We own this part of the process. We can make certain things transparent, but ultimately, it's the, it's knowing what the inputs are and what the outputs are, okay? So I, you know, I share Jess's concern about transparency. I would like to see these questions posted, you know, as part of, you know, as part of our public record.
The questions?
Yeah, exactly, so, so people understand what the evaluation looks like. And so there's thirteen areas, and each of them having, you know, four, five questions in it. I'd like to see those, you know, out there, so that they understand what the inputs are, okay? Once the inputs go in, you know, again, there's a lot of raw data that goes into it, some of which is getting aside by that.
Correct.
But then.
Board on track.
Oh, sorry.
Board on track, yeah.
Board on track, sorry. Is getting aside by. Is getting aside by a board on track. But then, someone's gotta go in there and make sense, and make sense.
Yeah, and I, part of board on track's concern, frankly, is that you do the 360, you do the direct reports there, that if you just publish everybody's data, then you're not gonna give us full data.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Their concern is if you publish every, all the raw data, then you're not gonna give us.
But you can't.
You can't.
You can't.
So it has to be done, you know, in a small group, in a smaller group than, they, they recommend three people, and they recommend, to be very clear, they recommend three people who do this task force, and the board chair will want them, but not the actual person heading the committee. And that you pull in that, that smaller group who's going to then get all the data.
Well.
That, that addresses my concern. I, I see where that is coming from and why that would be important, so I thank you for that.
So we really said is the governance committee is going to take care of our data and pull those themes out, and then we'll be able to discuss you that within governance.
Well, I think it's going to be, to be, to be evaluation committee.
So I'm, I'll volunteer for that, and I'll volunteer Mike for that too.
The small group. I mean, so we should talk about this. Do we want to have it be those, the five people in governance, or we could have it be, can it just?
Well, so, so we've dealt with these kind of reports and these kind of data a lot, so there's an advantage there. I'd also suggest that one other advantage is that you all have a governance role, you know, in terms of, you know, in terms of being sort of the, the appeal.
I know what you're trying to be, you mean the two-step process, right? That's sort of, that's, that's another process.
So what's the deliverable? What's the deliverable that's like? That Ken is, I'll say this one. Two-page memo?
Yeah, it is, it's a, it's a memo.
Okay. I, I mean, I.
And a compilation, okay. Well, so there's a couple of other things that we have.
Well, so, okay, so first off, I, I'm not sure I'm agreeing to a two-page memo yet because there's gotta be some data that comes out.
Right, the data comes out of it, yeah.
Okay, so there's, you know, I mean, you know, if you look at 360, 360 does have a roll-up rating source.
Well, there's two, there's two pieces of this, right? There's, there's this evaluation tool, but also we, we need we, because we have set goals, we need to also evaluate Joe against those goals that we set as well.
Well, so now you bring me up to a question, and my other question, which is, did you all discuss the connection between this tool, which by the way, I have to say, is pretty good. I mean, I, I actually thought it was well-organized, I thought, when I looked across the 13 areas, I've got a, a landscape pretty well. It did reflect quite as, as explicitly as the goals that we set out.
At all, yeah.
And so I would point out to the board, one of the, one of the challenges here is that Dr. McCleary is going to be rated on a tool that we're coming up with at the end of the process, which, you know, that troubles me a little bit. That troubles me the fact, I mean, when, you know, any of us that go into, you know, a performance appraisal year, they say, okay, here's what the performance appraisal will look like, here's what the goals that are set out and stuff like that. Now, I'm not that bothered by it in the sense that I've looked at the 13 areas, and they align very well with the goals that we set forward. So it's not like the 13 areas that board on track has are over here, and our goals were over there. But I do want to point out that we are developing a tool, and he's going to be rated using that tool at the end of the rating period, and we just have to look at the data in that context.
So, so if I could just comment though, I think if you look at those areas, those are fundamental competencies.
Absolutely.
And they, they're assumed. So, we're evaluating based on those as well as those, which is typical in.
And they can just cross 75 organizations and stuff like that. Absolutely, I understand that, but let's face it, we didn't, we didn't have it at the beginning of the year saying, here's what these are rated. And then the, the other thing is, is there 13 areas here, okay? And, and they're all being treated as the same. And they may not be of equal importance, and there's no, there's no, there's no way of doing that other than in the narrative at the end.
Yeah, that's what the small group.
Okay? So if, you know, if one of us thought, for example, communicate, you know, communications with, you know, the AMSA community is, you know, of paramount importance, you know, there's no ranking here other than to, to, to add these. So, this brings me to the question of, can we add questions to this?
In the future?
I don't believe so.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It's fixed, there's, we're fixed, but it's, but it's, there's that open response.
No, so, okay, so you, let me rephrase the question. Can we add open response? Can we add open response questions? Because if we, so the, the.
Almost everyone had enough.
The open response questions are, are the CEO's most significant accomplishments or strengths demonstrated this year? What are?
Those were the required ones on each of you. Every single one, every single question had an open response.
Correct, but at the end. So, correct, there is an open response at the end which says, you can provide additional comments or specific examples. And so, for example, if we wanted to sit there and say, this is the most important area for me, and I rated it very highly or whatever, then you could do that. But at the end, there are three open ones here. There are, what are the CEO's most significant accomplishments or strengths? What are the top three things the CEO should do next year to move this organization forward? Listening to key challenges a year ahead for the CEO, and you know, there are any issues.
So are you asking if we can add additional open response questions to that?
So my original question is, is there's no weighting, and I'm trying to figure out if there's a mechanism for us to provide weighting to our comments. And one is, like Scott's pointing out, you could sit there and say, this is the most important area and I rated it high. Because remember, at the end, you're seeing the ratings, but all the ratings are conglomerated together, and then the narrative responses are separated back. And so there's, if you just say, oh, this was very important, well, okay, you'd rate it higher or rate it lower.
Yeah.
So that's almost a question for the board on track.
That's a question for board on track, yeah.
Is there a way to weight out?
I'm sorry, isn't this just one of the tools that are being used to rate?
No, this is the CEO tool.
But don't, aren't we gonna look at?
And the goal.
Look at his goals.
And the goal, yeah, and the goal.
So this is just, this is just one tool?
It's one of the two, yeah.
Why should I ask you, board on track, is that the committee is entrusted, each, each director, each trustee is providing a lot of information, and the committee is actually entrusted with weighing it.
Yes.
Assembling and synthesizing, and then feeding it back to the board. So it's just, you know, information in to the committee, it's not supposed to cap it as written down in school.
No, but, but what my point was, is there 13 areas here that he is going to be rated on.
Right, and we're relying on the committee's judgment and knowledge.
You might weigh these things differently than.
And we're relying, we're relying on the committee's judgment of the sense, of their sense of the board as a whole.
That's what, that's what I understood. I think that's something.
Or as part of our instructions to our fellow board members, we could sit there and say, in such and so open narrative, put the top three most, the top three most important areas in your, in your, in your estimation. That might be useful information for us to see, because if there's a great deal of, and to a certain extent it has, it says, the key challenges, top three things that he should do in the next year to move the organization forward. I mean, there's, to some extent, some acknowledging that there are certain issues more important than others.
So, so let's see, we, we had talked about governance, that at our next meeting in July, we would probably spend about two hours actually going through the data and coming up with themes to gen, that then generate a summary on that one. So I heard what you said, which I think is probably good relative to yourself and Mike, having looked at a lot of this data before, and your roles, and maybe that's a precursor, or maybe that's the, you know, the focus group that actually does that effort.
Yeah, that's the question, right? They, they recommend that, that committee, right? The evaluation committee. When we talked about in governance, we talked about the five people in governance could do it, because that's how we've done it in the past. But there really is no reason why it couldn't be the two of them.
Yeah, and it might be a better process.
The most likely.
We'd be able to share.
That's what they recommend.
So, that would work, and then, Michael, can we get oriented to tools like we were?
Well, I don't know if they need the orientation quite much, because they've seen the tool, they've seen.
So, so.
They know how to interpret it.
But these questions.
So there's, there was a tutorial online, that's a tutorial that you, that, I said that's a tutorial you all saw.
So that, to me, sounds like that might be a more effective way of doing it, based on some prior experience and looking at the questions like this, and, you know, that maybe that becomes a subset.
So who's that now? Have we agreed upon who the five people are?
Well, we're saying it would be three people now.
So can I get the three, which is the recommended numbers?
And it wouldn't be, we're saying.
And we, O E and Ken.
People comfortable with that? I mean, that is capping into the expertise that.
I am.
I'm good, I just want to just put the clothes on one point that Ken brought up. So, the question you were saying is she's, you know, it feels fair, how the competencies from the end of the process. So I think, even after tonight, Dr. McCleary probably got an opportunity to come back and say, question number seven feels unfair. Like that, of all the questions I've looked at, I don't, I think they're all reasonable, for you expect, that's a valid, a good value tool, but this one about X, Y, and Z, I feel, you won't stop to think about that, it wasn't very focused for me. So I would just say, Dr. McCleary, just take, just take one more look and see if you can say, yep, this is a fair evaluation, or if there's certain items that, we might still look at the results, but you might say, just you feel unfair.
So, just one other comment. Ken, you were mentioning about weighting. So I think we need to be a little cautious about how heavily we may weight something, particularly based on your previous comment that we gave Dr. McCleary a set of goals early on, but we didn't necessarily give him these competencies, and specifically with them weighting.
I feel so.
So I think there just needs to be that balance.
I think, for me, my starting point would be the, what you could talk, I'd look at the goals, and that would drive the weighting, right? So if there are, because there are 13 questions, that five of them really line up these goals, then those would be the ones that I think would be.
So the other thing, just want to get clarification on that, is what we're, who we're sending the 360 out for direct reports? Do we, on the direct reports and department chairs?
Yes. I would, I would go yes.
So, so I'll just take that one for one moment. And I think, have you made the point, I think during the governance committee, a couple of us did, we should follow the tool as the tool kind of provides to do things. And if, if we were to do that, follow that model, and would you include the board members?
That's correct. I mean, it was mentioned, I think, when we had our BOT rep on the phone, she did say that the tool is designed for direct reports, not, not non-direct reports. So I think we can interpret that, we can discuss it, that, that was.
I'll look at the questions, and I, I, to me, they're close enough, even if not direct reports, to be able to get responses, but I don't feel so strongly that, you know, feel like, you know.
I feel very strongly that they have a lot to say. I mean, our executive director is the face of the school there, and I feel that they have more of a pulse. I really think it should be out of the data.
So, okay, I'll just play devil's advocate, yeah, I, I don't personally have a strong, you know, just playing devil's advocate. And I don't know what the reality is, but ideally, they're reporting to the principal. So they have a, a somewhat step-removed view of the ED. And so some of their comments may be perceptions more than reality, and hence, your direct reports.
Back to perception is reality.
Well, so. Not necessarily, not necessarily, I, I, okay, so, I reviewed the family survey, I reviewed the family survey, okay? And in O E comment, people are making statements which are not true, but they have a perception that they're true. And they're blatantly not, there are many comments that are absolutely true, but there are many that are empty of untrue comments. Okay? And because people are step-removed. For example, comments about athletics. I think when we went through the financial review, we see the school actually supports athletics.
Maybe we get off topic.
Allison didn't appreciate.
And, yeah, there's a clear perception out there that we don't support athletics, we don't invest enough in it.
Yeah, but we get off topic.
No, but I, well, I, I would say, but the point is, when people are removed, they don't, they have perceptions which aren't reality. And that's why I would argue, is the reports really should be the ones placing the evaluation. I don't know how removed the department heads are.
So I'll play my devil's advocate to yours, okay? If we were talking, and so, you know, you're talking here about, about people who are at, from an organizational perspective, a far distance away in the case of, say, parents making comments about whether the ED supports, and whether the school supports athletics or not. As the case of the department heads, it, it's close enough organizationally, and I, you know, I'm finding myself agreeing with, with Scott on this, so.
As someone who works in the school, I think that the role that, of reporting, the sort of reporting structure we have here at AMSA, that there's enough sort of muddled of where the direct reports are and sort of how that chain of command works, that I think it would be fair to ask department chairs to be a part of that tool.
So I, I was with you, but what trumps for me is the amount of data. So I'm kind of hung up on the, you know, the number of respondents thing, and I think, you know, Scott's, I think at the end of the day, we'll get more information, and as long as we understand that we're looking at it with this commingled group, and it's a data point with X number of respondents, I can live with it. I think you're right in terms of really the fact that you don't have a lot of commingled individuals. The same way that if we were evaluated as department chairs, I would want the principal to be evaluated versus Dr. McCleary to do that stuff, but this allows us to get more information, I think, right now, we can't get enough. And so that, that's what trumps for me, as long as we understand what it is and what it's not.
And that's fine, I, I'm just, was playing devil's advocate, but then, I do have one question. You mentioned just that the roles are commingled, is that what we ultimately want? Do we want them to be?
No, maybe we want them to be there.
And when the arms are, would be one to still get department head?
Yeah, I just don't think there's an, I think there's just not enough people to rate that, it just won't work, you know?
That would be.
Yeah. So I, I, I think it, I think we could probably do better each year, but I think for this one, I just can't get my hands on enough data, and I feel like I want to hear from everybody, it doesn't, but we gotta, we gotta report it in that manner. The commingled groups, some may not have direct access, but others, general means needs.
And I think the downside risk of including the, including department heads is, I think it is, I think it is incorrect, but it's a small downside risk, and I agree with that.
Okay, I was gonna suggest doing a struggle, but it actually sounds like everyone sort of agreed that, that the department chairs would be. Liz, did you have anything on that?
No, I, I was actually agreeing, having done 360s in sort of a consulting environment, I've seen it done with people outside of direct reports, and I think that works fine, so.
And I, I just can't help myself. One of the things that I'm struggling with here, by the way, is that 360s are, are not often done, I found, from the evaluative purpose for what we're trying to do. Usually there's a top-down evaluation, like what we're doing.
Right, this is input, yeah, yeah, this is input.
This 360 is usually done for the development, so if we're trying to, right, and therefore Dr. McCleary's, he can just choose to share that. So, we are kind of playing in some weird spaces, but I think at the end of the day, as long as we say, this is what the data's telling us, and these are the number of responses, you know, and just use it the right way. But I have never experienced a 360 where you up top, bottom up to, to give someone an appraisal.
And the vendor never destroyed a 360.
Yeah, okay, it's just, it's a little fucky to talk about.
Yeah, they, they never start using. They use it as input, right?
Yeah, but I think.
Yeah.
Right.
Do you think there's a.
This is specifically, you see, no more developed evaluation.
Yeah, I think the committee is well-informed by our discussion, should proceed on this.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right.
Okay. Okay. So that really, time wise, I'm gonna say, that's really probably valid for governments.
So, no?
Yeah, it's enough. The board has delivered all ready for the next working day.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So when does the survey close? When, when does everybody have to?
Okay, so board members, so now I gotta look at, because board members have a meeting, right? So board members that, that's, went out Monday night or Saturday?
Yeah, it's up to 27, 27.
Okay, so the depart, the direct reports will go out tomorrow, I will send out a note.
So right after July 4th, we'll come back and we'll.
It'll go out, but it's probably, given my schedule tomorrow, I probably won't give it out until tomorrow night, so they may not see it till Monday.
It's initially, we said we were doing simultaneous, so.
I know, but we didn't talk about the.
Yeah, the direct reports.
And did we answer Mike's question, is it mandatory to, for these people to?
I don't think we can make it mandatory, we're not.
It's wrong with us.
Yeah, we're not, we're encouraging that, it's input, it's the fact that I don't, we don't think we can make it mandatory. We don't think so.
So probably we didn't have time to, this, and we're running about 40 minutes behind.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you know, Jess took up a lot.
It was, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll take all the blame in time, I'll take it with me and pack it in my suitcase.
All right, fundraising and development.
Okay, so we did meet, um, we did meet this month, closed out the campaign at about $27,000, which is a 30% decrease from last year. Uh, was 39, so it's like $12,000 less. Uh, everything that we did, we did, all the things that we did the year before, plus an enhanced thank you program, where every donor got thanked either by students, by PhD. So we, we knew that the poor performance was due, probably to the level of just that fashion of the audience and, uh, you know, maybe a little bit. So that's closed, we're looking forward to next year, which we'll be doing in November, December, and discussing in September here.
Yeah.
Alumni affairs, there is a. Uh, alumni affairs, there is a, um, a reunion scheduled for Thanksgiving, which comes in two parts. One is the reunion, which is the Friday night thing, of our first class to graduate from college. And then Wednesday morning before Thanksgiving is inviting all alumni to visit to come to the school. Uh, we're gonna be assembling a focus group during the course of the summer, or very early in September, of alumni that we can find and see if we can, see if we can form a scene of association. It will be organized going into the, uh, going into the reunion and kind of building out of that. And I would love to have other members of the community, particularly parents of alumni, with alumni experience, alumni association experience, to come and join me.
So actually, when I send out that note, what I'll do is I'll send out a draft, because then I'll send it around so that people can give me comments on that. It sounds like something like that in particular, maybe something like that.
It's, uh, very, very exciting, Maury's very excited about it, just spent a long time talking to, uh, Dr. McLeary, it's, there's, there's a tremendous, tremendous thing, that we're just, we can start doing it, we start doing it right, and it can become.
I, I wonder if we should, you know, create something where the alumni can speak to the senior class or.
We do have that, we, we have that in January.
Oh, yeah.
So the question is building on that, and it's, what's gonna make alumni feel welcome, and what do alumni need from the school now that they're not here anymore?
And there's just, there's a lot of stuff to be.
So, yeah, one thing to think about that we've sort of encountered as alumni have come back to visit, is I love the idea of just sort of, this is the one, you know, everybody come back on this day, um, like a homecoming day, right? Um, uh, we have visitor policies in place for the safety of the school, and alumni are considered visitors. And so there's a process where they have to sign in and they have to be escorted, and sometimes alumni have felt a little bit like, they've been put off by that, because they're like, wow, this is my school, why do I have to be escorted around? So that's sort of something to kind of.
We have to structure so that does not happen, but I actually consulted with a friend of mine, alumni affairs at W P I, and I mentioned, and I got the feedback, he said, well, that's the first thing you have to fix, is that, we, we need to restructure the visit, so nobody comes back feeling unwelcome. You have to.
But they're so hot by him.
At the end of the year, you're still dealing with adults, you're still dealing with, you know, underage children, you know, they.
Well, I'm not doing it on sake, but I'm saying is that we have to provide, we have to be very, very focused on providing a particular kind of experience to returning alumni.
I think Scott's just saying that there's a different set of laws for W P I than there is for.
Yes, for being nice to alumni, isn't it?
Yeah, but creating something so that alumni can, so that we can have people come back and visit and make them feel welcome, without sacrificing any kind of safety, I think it's something that will be, it will be sort of something to be addressed. Yeah.
But very expensive.
Good.
This is such an untapped resource, I'm excited about this.
It is an untapped resource, it's actually, there's a lot. Just have 181 new alumni, right, so, all right, no. All right, education committee. Ken, how would you like to structure this discussion?
Yeah, so, uh, the way I'd like to structure it is not spending 30 minutes, I don't think anybody has, um, has, uh, has that energy. Just a quick update before we jump into the presentations, give you a few minutes to get the presentation out. So we've had our last meeting for the year, and Liz, uh, we, the committee put together a self-assessment survey, which Liz has put together online, and we're in the process of finalizing that and getting it sent out to the committees so that they can do, uh, do a self-assessment. So we won't be meeting again until September, mostly due to availability of, uh, the members. But during the time, I'm gonna take a look at the results of the self-assessment, and, um, have already started reaching out to people, asking if they want to continue on in the coming year. Um, so everyone from the education committee was here at one point, I think, uh, maybe everybody's, uh, um, stuck around here. So you have Liz and my, uh, self, as well as Jess, Dr. McLeary, Dr. Curry, so Sharon is here, was here. Uh, Jess and Jen are here, Renee and Melissa are here, so, you know, full house. I was interested in hearing, um, hearing your all's thoughts. Now, as you recall, I ended last year saying that, um, well, the committee was looking for you, you know, was looking for, from you, is a discussion relative to our findings. The findings came in, in sort of two flavors, one at the more strategic level, about what do we mean by academic program success and faithfulness to charter, and they, uh, the board is responsible for those. Obviously, also the executive director and other members of the school are, uh, responsible for that as well. And so there's this sort of governments versus management operations, um, aspect of that. So our responsibility in that comes from various regulations, mass general law, but also more generally from our responsibility to oversee, uh, the executive director. And then there was a set of three issues that were more tactical, uh, and this is, uh, I guess I need to number these, I'm not sure, it's the one that says committee challenges. Um, so this is our role of technology in supporting learning. Uh, and I think the committee is interested in getting some sense from you, uh, as to what you would like to do about that. What is the role of technology in supporting learning? And so we need to have a discussion about that. Uh, there are different ways of doing it, as I mentioned, uh, last year, uh, last year, or last month. You know, you have various mechanisms, one is to investigate this ourselves as a board, uh, or to refer it to a task force. Uh, you could bump it back to the ed committee, or of course, you could go to the expert. Uh, Dr. McLeary, asking him for his perspective to at least get the discussion going. Um, he also obviously brings in, uh, his perspective from the management operations, and may help us to start the discussion about sort of where our governance role begins and, uh, where his management operations role ends, and where our governance role begins. Uh, so that's true for the role of technology in supporting learning, also for encouraging innovation in the classroom, as well as alternative learning strategies, and this runs the gamut from field trips, uh, internships, travel, uh, the use of online resources, outside resources. Uh, you know, an example, you know, Dr. McLeary, uh, you know, we were talking about this, and, you know, so, Dr. McLeary said, well, you know, we have an AMSA curriculum, and so, you know, if somebody wants to take, say, a different language than what is offered, they're gonna be taking courses outside the AMSA curriculum. And so what is our, what is our role as a school? We have to vouch for the quality of this educational experience. And so, uh, letting people, uh, incorporate sort of non-traditional, uh, learning strategies has its difficulties. On the other hand, uh, alternative learning strategy also brings in, uh, a wealth of other ways to learn, to apply learning in new situations, and for some who have different learning styles, it may in fact help them to learn better. Uh, and so this, you know, runs the gamut, obviously, from, you know, special education, because, uh, students with special needs, to even, you know, people who, uh, you know, are sort of more, students who are in the more general, uh, education population. But again, might learn a little bit differently by, uh, by engaging in alternative learning strategies. These are not easy challenges, because to, to get into these, uh, means that we're gonna have to go and struggle with what we on the education committee spent many meetings doing, which was, how do you engage with the school administration, obviously also the faculty, and sort of making sure that we're following the board governance role, but also carrying out our responsibility to academic program success. An example of that is that academic program success is tied to the accountability plan, which, you know, is written, and we report on it annually. Um, but the accountability plan does not equal all the things that we need for academic program success. The, you know, the things that are in the accountability plan are fewer, and what we need to have a full academic program, a successful program is much larger. Uh, and it, you know, gets into other areas such as the regulations, um, you know, standard educational curriculum, uh, special education needs and things of that. So, um, so I'll, you know, so in that context, again, academic program success, based on this to the charter, looking at the role of technology, encouraging innovation, alternative learning strategies, and how do we engage in that in a governance way, how do we evaluate the success of those? Those are, those are challenges that we have for you. And then, so as a board member, I'm interested in engaging this, but the education committee is also looking for some direction, some connection with you as well.
I'm sorry, what are you, you're asking us? I'm, I'm confused.
Do you want to discuss that tonight, or you're just saying that this is something that you're going to, you'd like us to digest and?
We have responsibilities as a board to assure the academic program, assure academic program success in faithfulness to charter, how are you all doing that? In an academic, in an academic way? Would, how do we know what our responsibilities are?
So I think you've laid out some really good challenges. I don't know, maybe we do this one at a time, I, I, it's, it's, so, you're so close to it, Ken, so it's just, for me personally, it's hard at 9:30 at night too, it's a complex question. And there's also multiple dimensions, like there's money involved, right? So if we did, we, everybody says we want to go one-on-one, we want to do all that type of stuff, that's, so there's just, there's a lot of complexities here. So for me, what I looked at when I saw this is, all right, I think these feel like the right challenges, and it's, and I think the overall question to ask is, like, what? I just, I think we gotta figure out, how do we, how do we talk about it, right? Cause it's.
How do you mean the bite-sized challenge?
Talk about it at the right, you know, the bullet point, or say, okay, what?
Yeah, so they're listed in an order there, but not of any particular order of importance, perhaps.
I almost feel though, like honestly, that this should be talked at, at the ed committee, and then you guys come to us with kind of recognitions or some, you know what I'm saying?
How would you judge those, how prepared are you all to judge those recommendations? If we came to you and said, and, and we said, you know, we think that every year, every student should have a field trip experience outside of the classroom.
I think, I think we could have a great, robust discussion of that, if it's that specific of a recommendation, I think we could do that. But I'd want to understand, are the financial implications arrived, is our administration area?
Exactly, and that's the point, is, is that there's an operational management point of this. And so, you know, part of this is not just sort of a fun philosophical discussion about, oh, it'd be great to have, you know, field trips, or allow people to tap into alternative, uh, learning resources that are outside of AMSA, but what are some of the challenges? And so, you know, a starting point might be, you know, if you want to do one at a time, is to, you know, maybe pick one of these and say to Dr. McLeary, we'd like you to come to, you know, you know, take a, you know, take a couple months and come to the August, or, you know, you know, you know, August, you know, board meeting, or maybe September at the latest, and we want to start the discussion right there.
But about Scott's recommendation that the, I was asking this, that the ed committee says, okay, so we've thought a lot about this, and these are our top three, here's the roadmap, right?
Well, here are the top three, right?
This is recommended, focused.
I mean, I, I feel like you guys have, probably have a pretty informed opinion, and also opinions to react to it, and I'd love to have to agree with it. Maybe it starts with you guys saying, this is what we think is best for the school, and then let us, it's a great mix of, you know.
So, and the reason why that, the, the reason why we need to engage this, is that you all, we, as a board, have to engage in the same discussion that the education committee did. And that is a discussion about what is our governance role? How do we assure academic program success and faithfulness to the charter, using one of these as an example?
I think that's too, I get it, I think that's a really complex question for this.
You're absolutely right.
So I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I think we.
And you know, when, when Tom Taverne throws a spreadsheet up there, you know, and we're looking at dollars and stuff, because we've been doing it for months and months and years and years, none of us objects to taking a look at, you know, what the budget is, because we've always done that, okay? We have not as a board done that with regard to, you know, and to our roles relative to academic program success.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So, um, so on this page, there's those three items, technology, innovation, alternate strategies. Maybe I recommend a two-step process, so one is, do we agree that these are, in fact, as a board, do we in fact agree that these are the recommended, these should be, you're suggesting these are the recommended focus areas, A, do we believe these should be the focus areas? And then second, once we agree on what those focus areas are, then I think to your point, if you could, I don't know who should, whether the ED should, or the ed committee should, come up with some suggestion on how do we address that focusing? And then if there's a straw man against which we can, you know, agree or challenge or what?
I think that has to involve a conversation with Dr. McLeary, because Dr. McLeary, a whole load of degrees.
Yeah.
Dr. McLeary has views on this, he has experience with this, he's the one who will implement this, okay? And he's the one who, when you have the interface between our governance role and his role as heading the management operations, that's where the board has got to, to come. Now, the education committee has said, you know, here's those three issues. If you want us to take one of them and work with Dr. McLeary to prepare something for August and September, then I think that's what you, I think that's what you say.
I, I have a question, doesn't Dr. McLeary go to a lot of these?
Well, I'm at all the education committee meetings, I've been, I've taken part in these discussions along with, uh, others, you know, that go to the committee meeting, Ms. Bowden, a number of the people who are here, Dr. Curry. So, yeah, I have been involved with these discussions about these, uh, focus areas over the course of this past year. the course of this past year. I think there needs to be a little more clarity about what constitutes academic program success and faithfulness to charter. I know, I said this at the Education Committee meetings, but the way that the Department of Ed focuses on that is through the Accountability Plan, and the board is, the board obviously has oversight on that. Somebody mentioned earlier that the administration report, well, I report out on that, you know. And usually, most of those indicators come due in the summer or late, or late summer, early fall. That's when we get results for the various measures, not all of them, but the majority of them. So that would be part of what I'm going to be bringing to the board in the coming months, so that the board can judge, at least from the standpoint of the Department of Education, how the academic program is succeeding or not succeeding. Because the way that the, the way that the Accountability Plan is structured to begin with is it has to be rooted in what the Department of Education calls the.
Key design.
Key design elements, which in turn are pulled from the charter. So the Department of Ed says, okay, give us these key design elements, and then from those, propose, I'm sorry, propose an Accountability Plan that is rooted in those key design elements, which are in turn rooted in the charter. Then they approve or don't approve, the board approve, well, it goes like this, we show it to them, they say, okay, get your board to approve this, the board approves it, and then it becomes the blueprint for judging academic success, faithfulness to the charter. So I think Ken's point that he made earlier is that, that he has a broader vision of what constitutes academic program success. I'm not sure I completely see eye to eye with him on that all the time, but I do think that, obviously, there does seem to be a role in the education of our students in terms of how technology factors in. I know there's a lot of talk in the community, and I've talked with other schools, and you know, the latest discussion tends to center on how computers will be used most effectively, either the one-to-one or, you know, the, something that was current a couple of years ago, the flipped classroom, these kinds of things. So I do think, maybe at a certain level, that is a board discussion, if it's going to involve, to Ken's point, you know, a lot of infusion of resources and a general philosophical sort of shift. Because, you know, I've talked with the department chairs, for example, about the one-to-one, and there are varying opinions about its, its usefulness, notably among the computer science teachers. They tend to think that it has to be looked at very, very carefully to see whether it's going to in fact be more useful than detrimental. Innovation, I think, is such a general term that it requires a certain amount of clarification. Just doing something new, period, seems to me to not get you very far. It seems to me you have to come up with the goals that you're trying to achieve, and then decide if you can get there doing something differently than you've done in the past, or maybe doing something better that you, you know, continuing to do something only better. So I guess that, that's where I feel, that's what I feel has to be talked about there. Alternative strategies, again, very, very broad idea, just doing something other than you're doing now. And again, I think, we do do field trips, we do have travel, although I believe this past year, we didn't have international travel, we're looking at that for next year. Internships is an area where there's probably need for some more input from the school side, because not everything that has been called an internship really rises to the level that we're doing now, I think rises to the level of a true internship. You know, it might be something like writing a few, a few stories for the website, but then it could also be, you know, working with a legitimate scientific enterprise in a much more involved way. So that needs clarifying. The online resources, again, it really depends, you know, if you're going to offer a, if you have the demand, say, say 25 people want to take Hebrew or, you know, I don't know, whatever language, then, okay, maybe that's a legitimate demand, and you can try to satisfy it by coming up with a quality online offering. So that's kind of my big, big picture.
So, so here's, here's my challenge. I feel like a lot of really good work went into this, and it feels like a really important time. Like, this is really important stuff that I know I have passionate feelings about. And I apologize, but I am, I don't think I have the, the mental aptitude to, to have it right now. And I apologize, because everyone stayed late, but I didn't want to, just did a lot of work went into this, and you're, you're asking some really good important questions, but I don't think I can do it.
I don't think anybody's expecting that we're going to solve this problem in the next five or 10 minutes. I think what the Education Committee is trying to get across is that it does work to send to you in terms of recommendations, and at that point, you need, you know, you need to then say, okay, this is what we're going to do. And so we're either going to research this on our own, or we're going to go to Dr. McCleary and say, "Dr. McCleary, you know, you just said some interesting things about the use of technology in the classroom, and we'd like, we'd like to hear more. If you're talking to the department chairs and faculty and so forth, we'd like to hear more about what are the challenges, you know, what are the opportunities, what are the challenges, et cetera, et cetera." Or you might go to, you know, there are other things that you could do. But this is an ongoing discussion that we have to have, and it's not going to be something that any one meeting is going to stop.
Yeah, so Ken, I just want to confirm the kind of process-wise, how we handle this. So is kind of the first step, I'll just go kind of back to that again, is the first step that we, as a board, fundamentally agree that these are the right focus areas? That there shouldn't be something else on it or not something else? And then once we're in agreement with that, then agree on what is the process to, to go through each focus area, or, well, prioritizing first and then go through each one? That is to say, to your point, you have Dr. McCleary, the chart of the effort, or does the Ed Committee, or kind of jointly, do you do it? And come up with a straw man, also to bring to the board, and then we kind of review that and, and, you know, react to that? I mean, is that the way we should go about it, or?
That's one.
So I propose that.
So I, I, I like that. What would be helpful for me would be to know, did you whittle down to get to these three focus areas, and then settle them, what were some of those other areas, so we can sort of look at it in its entirety and say, yep, based on that list, of the design I may or may not be able to think of, yep, I feel these are the three that I focus on.
Yeah. I guess, before you answer that question specifically, can we agree on what the process should be? Because I just want to add, which I agree with you 100%, but I just want to make sure that the Ed Committee and Dr. McCleary kind of get together, and they're coming out with these three.
That's how we're going to do it.
This is how you're going to do it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, as Dr. McCleary said, he's been at every meeting as a judge, so, you know, I mean, they've been active participants, and that's where, that's why the Committee thought it would be good for you all to engage in the same level of discussion, to try to figure out what your, you know, your board governance role is, just like you do, you know, with strategic planning or with finance, you know, looking at financial reports or fundraising or what have you.
So I think one of the fundamental things we'd like from the board, if I may, Ken, is this issue of what is the role of the Education Committee in terms of governance? So for instance, we could come up with a plan, let's say, technology, and let's say in the Ed Committee, we get up this thing, and we're like, oh, one-to-one, and we're going to do this, and we come to the board and we present the straw man. I think before we get to that point, we want to know, is that the role of the Ed Committee to come up with it? Is it the board's job to be making decisions about a one-to-one program? Is it the Ed Committee's job to be making a decision about that? And, and if, we don't want to spend a lot of time developing a plan to bring to you if at the end we say, wait, this isn't a board function. Am I off-base with that, Ken?
Well, I would say that I think, just as the Education Committee has benefited from hearing Dr. McCleary and his perspective, has benefited with experience, and I think the, the board as a whole needs to hear of this. And I, I guess I will just encourage you to pick one of these three to start with, whatever the board feels, you know, to, to start with, as being, okay, so let's take a look at, well, in technology or alternative learning strategies. You know, what, you know, how does this fit into our charter, into being faithful to our charter? How does this fit into academic program success? And understand some of the realities that Dr. McCleary's having to deal with when presented with these things. If you all have read the charter, you realize there's an awful lot of stuff in the charter that we don't do anymore, and we haven't done, largely because, you know, our school our size can't do that, and decisions have been made over many years. But I don't think anybody thinks that we're not being faithful to that charter. Certainly, these found us to be faithful to our charter than most of every charter.
So I like the focus area, I like, I think those are good challenges, I like the focus areas, I think we should start with technology, and I'd be very interested in a recommendation under the guise of our role of making sure we're faithful to the charter, that the Education Committee in partnership with Dr. McCleary come back and say, "This is what the roadmap should be, this is the things that we need to focus on, these are our priorities, and these are the operational implications." And then let us have that, let us have a discussion about whether that feels right.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I guess what I would say is, is that since the Education Committee is not meeting until September, I think a good starting point would, you know, be to ask Dr. McCleary to spend, you know, just 15 minutes talking about some of the discussions he's had on the role of technology, if that's the, if that's the one.
That'd be a great primer for, I think it would be an excellent point.
And it would give you a sense of some of the discussions that we've had on the Education Committee.
So I think these three are great. I throw two others out there. So one is, and it actually came up in a parent survey also, making sure our students have the right tech study skills and organization skills, self-management skills to be successful and self-driven. Research shows that, that gaps in that area can be, you can get through high, high school theoretically reasonably well, maybe not here, but reasonably well. And then once you hit college, if you don't have those skills, you can really suffer. That's one area. And then another is how do we measure our success in terms of actually getting students to be college-ready and career-successful? Yeah, a lot of schools just, they don't, they don't fold their students.
That's a great one.
So those are the two areas.
We, we had some conversations about that. It's a complicated topic.
I think some of these we can also talk about, like we can, we can actually devote substantive time in January, and so as we think about this, I mean, I think it is, whichever one we pick, I'm actually not, the technology is the first one, whichever one we pick is sort of the first area, the important pilot, but then I think we need to really look into. That's what we have, you know, six hours for this meeting to work. And these are all longer-term, you know, substantive meeting questions.
They are, but again, I hate to keep starting to sound like a broken record, but I think you all would be interested to hear Dr. McCleary's perspective on these topics, and how, you know, there, there is a, you know, it is a difficult challenge figuring out governance role versus, versus management role. And so when you, you know, clearly, you know, we start sitting here, you know, the board's not going to sit here and start picking, you know, what computers we're going to use, or what, you know, software, or start directing teachers on how to use it. But on the other hand, you know, the use of technology, you know, a number of parents have talked about how their kids, they go off to college, and are they, is getting, part of getting them ready for, you know, college and career readiness, using technology appropriately is more than far enough.
Can I, just one last? Listen?
One by thirty.
Okay, one more thing to say, okay, one more thing left. The, you may be able to line up from a process standpoint, stuff like the committees, so finance committee, what is your opinion as a committee on technology, government, things like that, and a task force, so facilities, recruiting, regional, each of those task forces may have a value around this topic as well. So there may be facilities implications around technology, or, you know, all this work you've been doing, Ken, around the regional, it's just task force, technology can be a tremendous enabler for it to be able, right? So, so I would.
We're not negotiating the contract anymore, we are going to have.
But as we, as we pick a topic, we can, we can build process around our committees and task forces.
Start writing.
So if we do use technology as the first one, I mean, the first topic is to be philosophical discussion, and then that next step.
I'm sorry, the first topic, what?
If we, yeah, first discussion is philosophical discussion right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you want to do technology, or you want to do?
But are we agreeing on what the five areas?
I think both areas are good.
I do like the areas.
Yeah, the five areas were reasonable.
Okay. But I think if others, you know, I think it's okay to add, to start to say, okay, I have another idea, you know, I think we have to lock out those, you could say, these five aside from technology, then others.
Well, so the three that we offered up are, were offered up largely because we actually devoted some time and discussion. We think that those have incubated long, long enough to, you know, to have a useful discussion, so.
So to that point, Ken, maybe, maybe the one that I'll offer is either technology or if one is really well-incubated, it might be the best kind of first one to get to.
Well, yeah, that's, that was actually the reason why I didn't suggest technology as the first one, because I think technology has much broader reaching implications in terms of, you know, management patients and infrastructure challenges, or something like alternative strategies.
Yeah, but see, that's, it's for that reason, there's a good illustration, because to Mike's point, you know, it gets into infrastructure, it gets into, you know, budget, it gets into, you know, what would the teachers implement, and, you know, again, that, that is one of the three, you know, that, that is probably the one that we spent the most time on, talking about. The other two, I think, are probably equally ready, certainly the alternative learning strategy. I think Dr. McCleary had a lot of good stuff to add on that as well.
It may be a vicious strategy, I mean, you may decide that next year, we're going to go after two of these.
Yeah.
And then align goals and all that type of stuff, it may just be.
So which one?
Yeah, so which one? What do you think is, rather small?
If.
I would go with the committee's.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, I would go with what the committee's recommending.
I agree.
I think the committee would rather have you engage in one that is of interest to you.
They're all of interest, because we agree on them as.
Pick one that you think you should go with.
I think the committee is most prepared to help us on technology.
Is that the committee that wants to start?
Well, again, I think that would be, it'll should, because I think Dr. McCleary has some good things to say about that, and it's a good illustration, but the other two would work as well, I think, once.
I, I think technology also offers another plus of it, is that it's, it's a concern from the stakeholders. So it's, it's not just sort of internally driven here, but we've heard more about it. So I, I.
That's true.
I mean, they've, there've been other, there.
Yeah, the alternative strategies too.
But.
So can we start, say, the August, you know, give Dr. McCleary a time to get together some thoughts, and since we've got a full meeting next time, please sort of work towards that.
Just put some, like, bookends in there for us, right? So like, as you start thinking about technology, what's in, and that, like, just frame it, right?
Will do.
Okay. All right. We have a very short executive session, just to give an update on pending litigation. So.
Thank you, Mr. President. We adjourned the executive session for the focus, discussing litigation, not to return open session.
Not to return open session, yes.
That was a, that was a motion, somebody's got to say.
Okay, Mike second, roll call vote.
Yes, 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 yes.
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 And I'm going to invite Tom Alvarado to join us, and Dr. McCleary.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again. I don't know where I'm going. All right, Tom, you know, there's a big case in mind, you know, it's going to be a long night. Whatever he's in my head, he's just fluffing about too hard, I don't know. You may get off.
Copycat, yeah, no, no.